Ann Parkin?
Yes, correct. My interest is a little different in that we actually design and install solar systems, and the City of Los Angeles seems to be stonewalling us on the California State Constitution, the Solar Bill of Rights, which states that we -- there's nothing that can prevent us from installing systems other than health and safety, and yet we get corrections constantly to block our projects. We have one project in Front Historical that's been there for six months. The building is not even a historical building, but we are unable to proceed until we finally forced it to go to the city attorney's office. But we receive all kinds of corrections on zoning, even if we're putting a solar system outside of the building in the parking lot. We're expected to upgrade fire alarm system in the building. We're expected to strap hot water heaters and things that have nothing to do with the solar system. So we would like some pressure brought on the Department of Building and Safety to become aware of that Solar Bill of Rights.
Thank you very much. Yolanda Gonzalez.
Yes, good afternoon. Yolanda Gonzalez, Huabash Unidos, Hall and Beck area. I'm here to make a comment as a property owner as to what is going to be happening. A, rent control is killing me. I cannot get any loans. I have equity in my property. I had to borrow from another property to pay off my property, and everything is going up. I have my water bill right here, and I just want you to know that you are killing us as business people, as borrowers, as everything else. I was offered by the county to put in solar panels onto my building, but because I happen to be just one step borderline county and City of L.A., I can't put them in. Why is it that the county is offering such a good deal and I can't even raise my rents whatsoever? And then yet I have five tenants that right now are unemployed, and I am taking in the burden and not infecting them. I'm saving their families and their children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Steve Needleman. Mr. Needleman? Okay, there he is.
Thank you, counsel. Property owner in the garment, primarily in the garment industry downtown, which has been -- industry has been decimated over the past year or so with the retail stores, manufacturing, everything that the economy that has affected this. This is just the wrong time for the city to do this. It is irresponsible for the city to do this at this point, looking at the, not just this one increase, but the increase that's gone on. And if you tally up over the past two to three years, we're at 30% to 40% increase with this current one that's being proposed. It's absurd to think there's no business that's been allowed to do that, run that kind of business that way. It would not subject and wouldn't be able to keep the customers. You have us locked in. I'd like to see the Department of Water and Power show where they've made cuts in personnel as every private business has had to do. What anywhere that they have taken some responsibility for their own business to make some cuts is every city business across this country. Nothing's been done at their department.
Thank you, Mr. Needleman. Let me just set the framework here, and then we'll ask DWP, PA Consulting, and the CLA and the CAO to come up to the middle table. For the benefit of those who are here, we're here to discuss a proposal today from the Office of the Mayor and the Department of Water and Power to modify the energy cost adjustment factor cap of the electric rate ordinance from .1 cent per kilowatt hour to .8 cents per kilowatt hour per quarter effective April 1st, 2010, totaling a 2.7 cent increase. This is the largest rate increase in the department's history, and I believe that's why we as a council voted unanimously on Tuesday to assert jurisdiction and bring the discussion to this committee. Now, in a moment, we will be hearing from representatives of the department to take us through what is in the board resolution so that everyone understands what was passed by the Department of Water and Power Board and what it would mean if we approved their recommendations. I will then ask that we hear reports from PA Consulting. And for background, the primary purpose for asserting jurisdiction to allow the city council, the full council, and this committee to discuss and fully vet this ECAF issue offers transparency for the benefit of the public and the ratepayers. That is important so that the council can offer the ratepayers an opportunity to understand the proposal fully and understand its implications. The energy cost adjustment factor was established as a pass-through charge to Department of Water and Power customers to recover the costs of fuels such as natural gas, coal, and short-term power purchases. Now, I'm personally concerned about the impact of these ECAF changes as our members of the committee for all ratepayers, single families, renters, people on fixed incomes, and our commercial and industrial users. We need to develop a strategy to assist the large Tier III commercial and industrial businesses by slowly phasing in future power hikes. Many of the users are already incorporating conservation and energy efficiency guidelines and are seeing no changes in their rates. So what I seek here today in this process is transparency and fiscally sound department operations to be discussed here on the record, to develop cost-effective rates for residential and commercial ratepayers, to create viable job opportunities, and ultimately develop a plan that offers a collaborative, strategic approach to increasing our renewable portfolio in the future. One way to achieve this is by reconstituting the ECAF into separate, easy-to-understand pieces, and to look at a pure ECAF with separate accounts for demand-side management programs and a competitive renewable portfolio standard. I do have concerns about the instability of management and the stable leadership at the Department of Water Power or the lack thereof. There is a lack of oversight when it comes to the price of purchasing renewables. We need to have a renewables manager at the Department of Water and Power who has the expertise to purchase the most up-to-date renewables at the very best price to the benefit of the ratepayer. Right now, our department has no permanent general manager in place, and a renewables program that has proven to be very costly and arguably ill-conceived. This is an opportunity for us to correct the situation and analyze our future, determine the best course of action, and create a collaborative plan with the department, with the mayor, and the council to ensure a strong and clear renewable future. Right now, the proposal before us asks us to rush ahead without first looking back and seeing how we can make this work. The reality is, is the cost of energy is rising. We need to respond to that, and that was and is the intention of our energy cost adjustment factor, to address the rise and fall of energy costs. At the same time, we cannot turn a blind eye to how this will affect our ratepayers, both residential and commercial. So with that, before we get into questions and answers, I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to make some opening remarks. Okay, Mr. Kocorian. All right, Mr. Alarpan. All right, great. That will be fine. And what we'll -- again, what we'll do is we'll have the department speak first, then PA Consulting, and I'd like to have CAO and CLA up at the table, too, so you may have to roll some extra chairs for questions. And then we will have members ask questions after their presentations, and then I will call on the public. We have quite a few cards. This will be a good opportunity for you to hear firsthand, if you haven't been here before, what they have to say, and then that should enable you to shape your comments. So with that, I have the CFO, Mr. Potola, and anybody else here from the department who is coming to speak on behalf of the department up at the front table. For the record, just identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Mr. Potola. My name is Ramon Raj. I'm the Chief Operating Officer, Department of Water and Power.
Jeff Potola, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Department of Water and Power.
Lorraine Paskett, AGM Sustainability.
Aaron Benjamin, AGM Power Systems.
Okay. Who's going to make the presentation?
Okay, I'll make the presentation. If the -- I just want to make sure, do you have copies of the presentation? Was it handed out? Okay, you do, good. It's got a brief 14-page presentation, and we have some additional information. Should there be questions? On page two, we walk through why do we need to go from .1 cents to .8 cents, and why do we need to do this now? The main target of this, under the second bullet, if you look at number two, is to meet our financial planning criteria. As we'll see in a couple of slides, we have some drastically increasing costs, and in order to maintain our debt service coverage of 225, our minimum unrestricted cash target of $300 million, and a capitalization factor of less than 60%, which is to ensure that we have no greater than 60% debt of our entire capital structure. We've had a number of reviews by two financial advisors, as well as PA Consulting, have reviewed these targets and believe these are necessary to maintain our AA bond rating. A single A, if we were to drop to a single A bond rating, the cost is on the order of $70 million a year. If we jump to page three, and on page three shows our renewables. Some of the costs that are increased are tied to our renewables. We also have costs that are increased and tied to our coal, and I'll go through that in the next couple of slides. But as you can see here, DWP started in the fiscal year 2008, somewhere in the order of about 7% renewables. And through 2010, we are now up to 20%. And you can see where this comes from, the biogas purchases that we've made, hydro, which is a portion of our own hydro, as well as some small purchases of that. Wind is the predominant resource, renewable resource, that we've used to meet our 20% by 2010 goal, and then some market purchases which were needed in the short term, and then will go away, and wind will take over for that, and solar will take over for that as we go forward. As you can see here, all of the financial plans that we have reviewed, or that we presented and PA reviewed, are tied to 20% by 2010. The trust fund money that we're talking about, which we'll get to in a couple of minutes, is for anything that we could use above and beyond this, but the actual ECAF is right at 20%. Page four shows the per-unit cost. So this is how much per megawatt hour of energy produced does it cost. And you can look at that, we have roughly, the difference between natural gas and wind and solar is about $56 per megawatt hour. This is about double the cost of what we have to burn out of one of our existing plants. Now, one of the things to talk about on the wind, and I'll let Aram talk about it a little bit, is some of the statements we've -- going forward, when we look at our projections, there are minimal reductions in coal, but due to operational reasons, and Aram can talk to the reductions that we've had when we -- during the off-peak times.
So operationally, you know, as we're adding more renewables and wind resources are coming from a dispatch order, we have to take the renewables as first order, and that's causing us to back down our baseload generation like coal and gas fire and using it in a different way than we used to have before these renewables came on board. So when we look at our operational data coming in as the renewables were being added, our CO2 footprint has come down, and our operations of the baseload generating unit has been backed off.
And so part of what Aram talked about is the way that we dispatch power to meet the customer loads is we dispatch it based on marginal fuel costs. So what is the fuel cost for any given unit? So a renewable, obviously, you're spending all the money upfront, you're getting the wind turbine that then will turn, there is zero fuel cost. So that is something that we always take first because there's very low fuel costs. Next in order would be, and at the same time is Hoover Dam is one of our bigger resources where we have zero fuel costs for that. Then next is nuclear, which is about $10 a megawatt hour. Coal is about $20 a megawatt hour. Natural gas, which as you can see from here, is about $52, and then the renewables, which is up at 100, but again, that's the total of what we take. On the next page, and this is really, shows the issue that we have. If we can go to the -- there we go. And if you look at, this is our entire ECAF, which is our energy cost adjustment factor costs. So first to go, what that is, starting from the bottom in the black is the coal. So our cost for coal that we have, which includes our Intermountain Power Project, which is located out in Delta, Utah. The cost for natural gas with economy purchases, so that's anything we buy that's cheaper than it would be to burn gas, but that's generally, the pricing is towards the natural gas market. RPS costs, which you can see in the green, purchase transmission, other, which is a number of different things that are thrown in. City surcharge, so all of these, we collect 8% purely for the cost in the ECAF. So we don't collect all of the city surcharge, but only for these costs. And then the energy efficiency costs on the top. And what you can see from this, if you look in fiscal year '08, '09, the expenditures that we had were about $1.3 billion. So that's how much we spent, was $1.3 billion during the fiscal year '08, '09. If you look at fiscal year '10, '11, which will be starting in three and a little bit more months, the cost jumps to $1.85 billion. So you've got a $550 million increase in cost. That's what's driving the predominant issue of why we need to have an increase in ECAF. Just as a frame of reference, a one-cent increase in ECAF is worth about $240 million for the entire fiscal year. So if we look at this cost of $550 million, what are the biggest components of it? As I spoke, RPS is a portion, but not all of it. So let me just run through the numbers. RPS is about $261 million of that $550 million increase. Coal is increasing by about $83 million. Part of that is market conditions associated with the Utah market. Some of that is related to the tragic accident that happened out there, and that's driven coal costs up. Aram can speak to that if anybody has questions. And the energy efficiency cost is up about $59 million. Now, again, we'll get to the energy efficiency. This is one of the best investments we can make. Energy efficiency, we just looked at on the previous page where we're at about $110 for the renewables. Energy efficiency is about $25. So it's about one-quarter of the cost. It's a good, it's one of the best investments we can make. The remaining amounts are tied to the city transfer, which again, as these costs go up, the city transfer goes up. It's about $39 million. Nuclear costs have gone up about $25, and the rest, that's essentially all of the $550 million. If you look at this line going across, and it ultimately turns into be a red line, that .1 cents, that's what we have the right to collect right now. And as you can see, in the '10, '11 fiscal year, we're about $250 to $280 million underwater. So what that means is our expenditures will be $250 to $280 million higher than what we can collect from ECAF. And you can see that continues out through the '12, '13 planning period. What you see in the black line is how much we would collect under the .8 cents per kilowatt hour cap. Now, that includes the trust fund, but it shows how much we would collect for that. And you can see it would get just above, and it would collect a little bit above it, and then come back because it has to collect for the under-collection in the '09, '10 fiscal year. The dashed line on top of that is the RPS Energy Efficiency Trust Fund. So this is where we would collect ultimately the .7, and we'll see it in the next couple of charts, about $160 million a year to fund future RPS and future energy efficiency If we go to the next page, just to go through some of the bullets, the GM directed us after the, we came to this, we came, we mentioned and talked about the increase in ECAF as part of our budget, our budget for last fiscal year. So last May is really when we started discussing this publicly. It went through May, went through our board. In August, the board passed the resolution. It was 245. We came through this process where it was rejected, and that's where the motions and where the results of what we're talking about today came from. So there has been a great deal of discussion surrounding this. The GM after that 245 directed us to the absolute minimum with the impacts to the customer, and that's where you see the half-cent per kilowatt hour cap that we use. What PA did is they came through and they looked at some sensitivity on increasing fuel costs, on losing some of our low-cost units, and that's where they're recommending the .8 cent per kilowatt hour per quarter. And this, and the second bullet really talks about, the differences in that, on that .8 were loss of a low-cost generation facility, which we assumed was Palo Verde, one unit for the entire year, which I think, Aram, we lost two days ago. We lost it for a little bit. It's something that's not unheard of. The load factor has been low in past years. It's increased recently. The natural gas going up $2.20. Now, you say, is this something that couldn't happen, the $2.20? In reality, in the last five years, natural gas has gone above that twice. And the last part of the sensitivity, or the high-fuel case, as it's called, is that unsigned RPS would go to $125 per megawatt hour. Part of this, as we talked about briefly, is we will establish a RPS Energy Efficiency Trust Fund. This fund will receive about $160 million per year. Now, part in the resolution, the key element of this is it's only if the financial metrics are met. So only if we meet our debt service coverage of 225, we're meeting our debt levels and our unrestricted cash levels, will we increase the funding for that trust fund until we get the .7 cents. So if we have a high-fuel case and we can't get to that, none of the money will go to the trust fund because we've got to ensure that we have our financial stability. And then why don't we jump to the next page, and we can talk about that. If these are the projections on our budgeted case, and where we are right now in January 10 is 5.09, so what would happen in April 10, should the proposal before you be approved, we would go up to 5.89, so an increase of .8 cents, with .3 cents of that going to the trust fund, to the RPS Energy Efficiency Trust Fund. The following quarter would be 6.69, an increase of .8, and .6 would go to the trust fund. The next quarter would go to 7.49, and we'd have, we'd have an increase now up to .7, and ultimately, it ends up at about 7.78 in January of 2011, and that's the .7 cents that has been discussed. This is only if the financial parameters are met, and this is assuming our budgeted case. Obviously, if there's a high-fuel case, costs could be higher, and it's important to recall that ECAF is only calculated based on the calculations, what actual expenditures are. So it's not something that can be just set. It has to be based on the calculated rate. One other thing to talk about, and it's on page 19, we can go into it. The board package, while it's not in the resolution, we did talk about a reconstitution of ECAF, which we outlined, and certainly that's part of the process that the department is prepared to follow, that after we hit the immediate short term of the .8 cent, that we come back to this body for an ordinance change to get a reconstituted ECAF. On page eight is the cost-cutting and frozen base rate revenues. So the first thing to talk about, and I talked about this a little bit in council, was since 1993, the LA DWP power system has reduced staff 24%. We went from 8,200 on the power side to 6,244 today, while energy sales have increased by 18%. Now, part of this is the different plans that DWP has gone under. We went, we had three separate plans. One was the focus separation plan. The second one was the targeted separation plan. The third one was a staff reduction program. All of these different programs we did as part of our preparation for deregulation.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
This is 1993 to what?
Today, to today, yeah. It's today's occupancy. And, go ahead.
Now, have we replaced any of those positions with consultants and outside employees?
I would say that we have more employees and less consultants than we had in the past. I know, and I've got one I can share with you later. As we've gone from our low point after the SRP, you recall, it was, in total for the department, is around 7,000. A number of those employees that we've hired now are to replace ongoing contracts, to replace ongoing exempt employees that were here for years, and we just hired them back. So--
I would like to make a suggestion to Mr. Alarpan. That's a good question. We're going to ask the CAO to report back, so let's make sure that that is one of the questions that the CAO reports back on, so we can have some hard numbers on that.
Sure.
Yeah. I would like a clear answer on that.
Sure.
It's been my understanding, there have been 1,400 new employees hired over at DWP over the last year and a half, so I want to clear that up from an objective third-party.
Sure. Yeah, we're going to identify that on the next page. I'll go through those 1,400. Part of this, and where a lot of our rate pressure comes from, is our base rates have been frozen for the '10, '11 fiscal year. If you recall, roughly three years ago, we got three, roughly 3% increases on the power side to help us with infrastructure, and what we've done is for the '10, '11 fiscal year, we have requested no base rate revenue increase. Additionally, from comparison to what was asked for, or what was reviewed by this body in August, we went through, and at the direction of Mr. Freeman, we trimmed the absolute, the cost to the absolute minimum if they weren't directly related to the 20% RPS by 2010 or power system infrastructure goals. So anything we looked at that was related to infrastructure, we did not reduce those costs because, again, that is something this body has directed us, as well as our other stakeholders, to improve reliability, which we have SADI and SAFI numbers which have shown that we have. In this, so through the five-year period, we have reduced capital expenditures by about $745 million. A big piece of this was elimination of the Pine Canyon Wind Project, which was a higher-cost project and above the 20% goal. The decreased labor cost, this results from our new MOU, reduced renewable energy projects and purchases. We eliminated two of the higher-cost wind projects, which reduced our costs over the five-year period by $154 million, and that also included $600 million of additional debt that would have been issued off-balance sheet through SCAPPA. In total, you can see in the last bullet, this reduces our revenue requirement by $240 million annually in comparison to what we were looking at in the last summer. In the shared sacrifice, council member, you were just speaking of this, 1,480 employees. We have 1,480 employees that have come from city payroll. These are into needed positions, so these are not positions that we didn't need. These are part of our budgeted funds, and we hired employees from the city. This resulted in the removal of roughly $172 million in annual payroll, healthcare, and retirement costs for the city. Additionally, as these employees come over to the, to DWP, their funds that have been in the city pension fund by the city, stay with the city, and do not come to DWP. The pension obligations that there, if you add those two up, come up to about $578 million. We have also provided a significant amount of energy efficiency loans and rebates. The LED traffic control signal's about $10 million. LED streetlights was $40 million loan, was $16 million in direct rebates, and GSD facility improvements of $9 million.
And the loan, do you--
Sure.
The loans, you said loans and rebates?
Right.
I understand the rebates, but loans to--
Loans to the city. So when you have, for example, on the LED streetlights, you require capital money upfront to invest, to go out to install those LED streetlights. Rather than using your own funding requirements, DWP has an ongoing process that was developed in the late '90s. We supply a loan for that like we would to any of our customers that's putting in energy efficiency investments. It's a good thing for us because it reduces, it reduces the load. It's a good thing for the city because it reduces your bill, and we do that as well as the rebate. So for the city, you don't have to contribute any money, but it still makes sense for both parties. And on page 10, this is our financial plan summary, and the big things to look here is a couple of items, but the key elements that we talked about earlier, on line 10 is the debt service coverage. So if you recall, that's our target, is 225. And you can see going across that at our plan, we're at a 2.34. This again assumes an April 1 implementation. We're at 2.34 for our debt service coverage, and it goes to 2.4, then 228. So it is very close to our debt service coverage target established by our board. Additionally, if you look at the capitalization factor, you can see when we get to the end of the period, we're basically at 57% of our, of our capital structure is debt. And the bigger issue on line four is the borrowing. If you add up from the $600 million, which we're right currently in the process of doing, is $600 million of new money in April, so next month, you add up all that across-- a $600 million of new money in April, so next month, you add up all that across for the five-year period, we're going to be issuing over $3 billion, 3.12 billion of debt. So, the double A bond rating is critical to ensuring we keep that as, as low as possible for, for our ratepayers. The capital in total will be $5.1 billion. This also, just, and it, and it's not on here, and I apologize, it should have been, but it, has an assumption of roughly 3 percent base rate increases, starting not next year in 10-11, but in an 11-12 fiscal year. That's part of the assumption that is in here, but it's not part of the request that's before you, but I just want to make sure it's clear, and, and, and subsequent documents, we'll make sure we put that in there. And that's just for 2012, 2013, 2014, not for 2011, which will begin in July. On page 11 is energy efficiency, and this is one of the success stories that we've had. You can see, as I talked about in that last bullet, energy efficiency is roughly 2.5 cents per kilowatt hour. So, it's one of the best investments we can make. You don't burn anything for it, you don't have to generate the electricity, helps on the distribution and transmission. You can see where we've gone from, 164 is where we were as part of the energy crisis. We've, we've essentially almost doubled that with 318 last year, and a big part of the program is the 300 gigawatt hours per year, to make sure that we meet our AB 2021 goals, which is 10 percent of our overall load being met by energy efficiency. Page 12 is, this is a CPI-adjusted rate. So, what we did is we took the CPI, and we looked at what our rates are, and you can see on, on both of these, that the rates, starting in 1993-94, and this ties back to the labor staffing that we were talking about, the, the way, what allows us to do this is the great reduction we had in costs, and as well as we probably went too far on some of the capital in the, in the late 90s. But you can see, from '97-98 to about 2006, our rates were frozen, so that's why you see a steady decline in all of our rates. And even with the increases that we have, in all cases, the, the CPI-adjusted rate in the, in the 11-12 fiscal year will be less than what it was in '93-94. So, that, what that means is that our plan will have energy or electricity at, at or below the cost that it was back in '93-94 CPI-adjusted. Page 13, now, now this gets to where it, it merits review of this. This shows our, our rate increases. Now, let me preface this a little bit. Each one of these entities, and on this page and the following page, which will be the investor-owned utilities, each one of these, we know, has the same cost pressures that we do on the RPS goals of 20 percent by 2010. However, we do not know what their rates are going to, so we're showing you what the rates are today, we're showing our rates today, and then plus the increase, and you can see in some cases, we may be above other entities, but we know those entities are going up, and we would expect them to go up roughly the same as, as what we are.
Yes, ma'am.
So, was there a question?
No.
Nope, okay. So, these are all the municipal utilities in the area, Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. On page 14 is our comparison against the investor-owned utilities, which will still be below, other than small commercial, medium commercial, on, on the Southern California, Edison, all others, we will, we will be below in, in each of the cases. That is, the one thing I want to touch on, if, if we just jump through the appendix to page 16, and talk a little bit about the residential rate restructure. The residential rate restructure, when we look at the classes and how we're spreading this cost, and one, I was just recently at a meeting this morning, and I think there's, there's a little bit of inaccurate information, that we're putting all of this rate increase or disproportionate amount on business, and that's not true. What we're putting is spread across the kilowatt hours, across the classes equally. However, within the residential class, what we're doing is we're changing the base rate, so the impact on the customers in tier one, which consume less energy, is going to be less, and as you get gradually higher in the tier two and tier three, there'll be higher increases to those customers. So, if we start on the bottom, on zone one cooler, down on line B, which, what line B shows is for, for the customers in tier one, and let me walk through this a little bit, customers in tier one, so out of the total customers in the cooler zone, we have 275,000 essentially, customers, which is 55 percent of all the customers in that zone, and their average consumption is 216 kilowatt hours, that's very little. Those customers are all in the tier one zone. Their average monthly bill is $28.31. And in line A, you see, if we do not restructure their rate, their bill will go from $28.31 up by $4.71. However, what we've done is restructure the base rates to reduce the impact on the, on the lower-consuming customers, and so that drops from 4.71 to 2.41, and that's the 8.5 percent that's been in the paper, and that's for these customers. Across the board, if you look at, 2.7 cents is roughly a 21-22 percent rate increase, but we're minimizing the cost to these customers, because they conserve. The customers in tier two in the cooler zone, now this is the 38 percentile, so between tier one and tier two is 93 percent. Those customers in tier two consume 569 kilowatt hours, their bill will increase by $13.87, which is about an 18 percent increase. Customers in tier three, 34,786 of them.
Mr. Alarcon has a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Can we just clarify that that's in zone one?
That is in zone one, correct.
And zone one is the cooler parts of Los Angeles?
Zone one is the cooler parts of Los Angeles.
And I mean that weather-wise?
Correct.
Zone two would be the warmer parts, and you, you haven't described those.
Correct, right. I was going to go across, and, and that's one of the things, council member, that I wanted to talk about here. Some of the information that's out on the, if you look at tier three, on the cooler zone, you see that it's 7 percent of the customers in the cooler zone. If you compare to the warmer zone, there's only 5 percent of the customers in the warmer zone that are in tier three. And the customers that are in tier three in the cooler zone, they consume on average 1,662 kilowatt hours versus the warmer zone, that's only 1,253. The reason is, we have lots of customers that, in the, in the cooler zone, that have the bigger houses, and quite honestly, operate like commercial customers, run air conditioning all the time, and that's why you see they're at 1,662, they actually have a bigger impact than what you have in the warmer zone. And because they consume more energy, their, their bill impact, where right now, their average bill is $238, their bill's going to go up by 65-67, that's the 28 percent increase. Now, while that seems drastic, I would just reference the last page, if you look at that, it shows a comparison of our rates in LEDWP in the, in the winter and summer, and you can see, on those higher rates even, we're still below Southern California Edison. Southern California Edison charges a much higher on those, those customers. What this does is instills customers to conserve if they're consuming a lot of energy. And then, zone two in the warmer zone, again, similar numbers, you have 60 percent of the customers that are in tier one, 35 percent are in tier two, so a total of 95 percent, and the increases are 8.5 percent for the tier one, 16.3 for the tier two, and then 23.7 for the, for the tier three. And as I said, we have some additional information in there, but given the time, I think that's probably.
Okay. Great. Is that the end of your report, then?
Yes.
And so, what we'll do on this first part is to go through a series of questions from committee members, and then we'll get PA Consulting up. Just so that people understand, .8 cent over four quarters means how much of an increase?
It's, it's a .8 cent cap, and so, again, based on the calculation that we look at, so if it's a 2.7 percent increase, that's, that's roughly a 21 percent increase overall.
2.7 cent?
2.7 cents, I apologize.
What's the rationale behind breaking out a .3 cent out of the overall .8 cent to support the renewables program?
And so, the, and let me talk a little bit about the rationale on that. The .3 cents is ultimately to get to a, a .7 cent, where you have a stream of roughly $160 million into the trust fund. The one thing that I want to mention about that, the .3 cents is to ensure that we can reduce that amount if we have the financial need.
Okay, so, how much money will this, the .3 cent out of the overall .8 cent, going to the renewables program, how much money will this provide to the department to support renewables and related efforts?
If you look on the bottom of page 10, we have the, the.
Why don't you just tell us?
Oh, 600, 600, and I dare to say the number, $666 million.
And that would go into the quote "lockbox" end quote, is that correct?
It would go into the trust fund that can only be used for renewables and for energy efficiency activities.
And how does the department expect to provide oversight of this trust fund, to ensure that the funds are being used in a proper manner?
In a related motion, the board also passed.
ID yourself for this.
Ramon Raj, CEO of DWP. In a related motion, the board also passed a motion asking us to come back with a report on a ratepayer advocate position, and that position will be charged with, with the oversight of this fund.
And this is separate and distinct from the lockbox? The trust fund is separate than the lockbox?
I think, I think that lockbox terminology has been used to, to describe this fund.
They are one and the same, then?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is that, I don't, is that correct? I just want to know whether that's correct.
I, I believe that's a terminology that, that has been used to describe that, yes.
But, so, just to clarify, the lockbox is the same as the trust fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, what the commission will consider, which is what the council is in all likelihood going to put on the ballot in November, is that the ratepayer advocate would be the oversight for the trust fund slash lockbox. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am, yes.
All right. The establishment of this trust fund, if you will, within the existing ECAF would result in increased administrative costs, correct? Is that correct, or no?
I, I don't, I don't think it'll add any additional administrative costs, ma'am.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
I don't believe it'll add any additional administrative costs. I think we'll be able to do it within our current structure.
I mean, there'll be some costs associated with the bank that we're setting up to do it, and, and I could probably get an estimate for that.
Yeah, I want to get a report back on that, to the CAO, because that's one of the, we're going to start pitching things out there to you, so you can put that on your, your list. How, whatever the costs may be, could we have avoided these costs through another administrative funding approach, such as breaking out the RPS and energy efficiency program pieces?
Council member, if I may, it's, it's about $20,000 a year for the administration of trust.
Okay, that's fine, then, and I'll have the CAO verify that. But again, could we have avoided these costs by breaking out the RPS and energy efficiency program pieces?
Well, if, if, the cost of 20,000 is for the establishment of the fund, trust fund, so if we didn't have the trust fund, yes, we would save the $20,000 a year, yes.
Yeah, well, I want, we're going to ask the CAO to verify that now, yesterday, and I'm not going to make any editorial comment about that, but we did receive your letters, two of them. One was on the transfer, and the other one was on cost-cutting measures. Now, you, this is my interpretation of the letter. The letter was submitted with respect to the department's inability to provide the city the supplemental transfer with this rate increase. Can you speak to this in light of the fact that previously, the department and your representative, Mr. Freeman, had said that there was no link between the ECAF and the transfer?
I, I, I'm sorry, but I cannot speak to what Mr. Freeman.
Well, let's just talk about your letter, then, yesterday.
Okay.
Why don't we do that?
Because you, you signed the letter yesterday, so, again, talk to, why don't you talk to
us in your own words? About whether or not there is a link between the ECAF and the transfer, or not? Even though in the past, that has been represented to us publicly, on the record, that there was no link between the two, now that appears that there is.
There is a link, it may not be a direct link, but there is a link, because what ECAF does is provides the revenue that we need, and which can, then, we can use to declare a surplus. So, in that respect, it does have a link, yes, ma'am.
So, basically, what your letter said is if we don't do the energy cost adjustment factor, then the city will not receive its transfer. Am I, am I correct in my interpretation?
Yeah, I think, and I know, and what I, what I said, and what the intent, and what I think I did right, was if we do not have a rate action for, for April 1, it'll be difficult for us to recommend to the board to make, to make that decision. Obviously, we cannot make that decision, we have just recommend to the board, and the board makes the decision. So, based on the fact that we might not have it by April 1, then it will be difficult for us to recommend that action, yes, ma'am.
Can you speak to the fact that apparently, the department has close to $1 billion in reserve, which does provide you with cash on hand for at least six months? Now, this information was derived from the most recent Fitch Bond Rating Report. Can you go over that with me?
I'll, I'll have Jeff explain that, he had all the details on that.
So, so again, as we talked about earlier, let me first talk about the cash levels being reviewed. Part of what we've done in, in the last year, especially as we're having these ever-increasing costs, we've had our cash level as one of our financial targets reviewed. So, that has been reviewed by, by our gardener, who's our financial advisor, has been reviewed by Prag, our financial advisor, has been reviewed by PA Consultant, as part of the report, which we, which we have here, and I can show some parts of that. And, and the three rating.
Do you have $1 billion in reserve?
We, we have roughly, $550 million is in our debt reduction trust fund. That can only be used for debt, for debt payments, and so, that, that is in there. The, we have.
So, you don't have $1 billion in reserve?
We don't have $1 billion in unrestricted cash, as I said, when I went through the presentation.
What about the rest of it? Yeah, let's, well, let's do it again.
Okay.
Just break it out.
Okay.
So, people can understand.
So, and let me, if I could, just find the exact language here.
Yeah, but I have it.
Yeah. You got your water? Okay.
Here's my calendar.
Me, too.
Yeah, let me see. Yeah, I have it here, so. So, right, and in the Fitch report, it talks about that the Board of Commissioners, governed body of the utility, approved formally financial policies in 2009 that included a debt service coverage of 225, a minimum unrestricted cash reserve of $300 million, and a debt capitalization of less than 60 percent. The reserve level of $300 million, when combined with the debt reduction trust fund of over $500, is expected to provide healthy liquidity as LEDWP executes its large capital plan. And, and so, and, and the actuals that it talks about is down in the, talks about that our unrestricted was at 400, actual financial performance, LEDWP's liquidity was strong with $445 million in unrestricted operating cash in 547 in the debt reduction trust fund. And again, the big thing to, to, to recall is when we talked about going from 1.3 to 1.85 billion dollars, that is going to bite into our, our operating reserves if we don't have any rate relief. And that's really the reason that I talked about when we go from that 1.3 to 1.85.
And rate, rate relief would be.
And meaning going from .1 cent per kilowatt hour to .8, correct?
I want it in lay terms, so that people can understand.
I agree.
And how, how did the department accumulate the dollars for the debt reduction fund?
The debt reduction trust, trust fund was established in the late 90s as part of the deregulation plan, where we went through and made all these different cost reductions, including staff reductions, and that was established, I believe, in '97, if I'm not mistaken, and that's where all those costs came from.
With respect to your recently submitted cost-cutting measure report, which, again, we'll note that I asked Mr. Freeman for it last fall, and I think you, you said you produced it to the commission last Thursday. I believe we have a copy of it, but I, I would like to note for the record how long it actually took to get an actual response, and I, I quite frankly, am appalled. How much in operational cuts and savings did you report?
The operational savings, well, all of the, all of the RPS projects would all be operational savings, so that's $154 million. The capital reductions, obviously, that's going to be something that'll be spread over time, but it's those operational savings and the labor savings of $189 million, that'll be split between O and M and capital.
Were these cuts from existing program budgets this fiscal year?
The, no, that was all done. The, no, that was all done, we, the board approved the budget in June of last year. These cuts were made in January and were transmitted to our board in January of 2010.
What about cuts from future projected budgets?
Right, all of, we do our budget planning on a five-year cycle, and so we made all those reductions over that five-year period.
So you didn't cut anything from the existing program?
Well, again, I go back to the labor, that had the labor, we had in the, with the difference with the MOU, that was a reduction that we experienced in the existing program.
And how much did you save there?
That was the $189 million.
And then on a future basis, those, on a going-forward basis, future projected budgets, which, you know, some would argue are speculative because they're in the future, haven't occurred yet, expenditures haven't occurred yet, possibly the funds were not encumbered. So, you know, it's kind of a theoretical savings and in fact, not hard savings.
Right, I mean, any budget, it's, if you've made an expenditure, obviously, it's hard to reduce that saving. So any savings is going to be in a future period that you have a plan for what that's going to be, the purpose of the budget over a five-year planning horizon, and we've made the reductions off that plan.
Okay, this is where I get frustrated with the department. Because as you know, again, these are in the future, may or may not occur, based on any number of factors. They are savings in theory, arguably not in fact.
Councilmember, if I could, I just, on the, on the two specific renewable projects, those were being negotiated and those were stopped at the time once the decision was made last summer. So I know those were something that we are in the process, and I think we are far along. May I let Arum?
Those were the renewables projects that we were getting ready to bring to the board, and that's, those are the ones that we deferred.
Right. All right, the department, I understand, may be planning a series of base rate increases for 2011 through 2014, is that correct?
It's from fiscal year 11-12 forward for those three years. Not for 2011, would be the year starting in July, and we're not having a base rate increase that year.
Okay, say that again.
We are not having a base rate increase in the 10-11 fiscal year. For the 11-12 fiscal year and forward is what we have for planning purposes, is roughly a 3% increase.
Okay, now that's 11-12 fiscal year forward to what?
To our, the end of our planning horizon, which is, yeah, 13-14, I think that we're showing.
Again, tell us what the ratepayers can expect. Basically, how much of an increase, how much of a base rate increase will you be asking for from 2011 through 2012, all the way through 2014?
It would be 2.9% per year for the next three years. So roughly, you're looking at a little less than a 9% over those three years. And councilmember, I may also add, if you look at, I think on page 10, we have listed out what our average rate is for all classes. And that's something that we've been doing as well for the last year to ensure transparency on what those costs will be. So you can look and see what those costs, the rate per, we have per megawatt hour, which you just divide by 10 to get to cents per kilowatt hour. And we're listing that out on the bottom of that financial plan. So we want to ensure everybody sees what that is, that businesses can look at that and can do planning for it.
Okay, why don't I, I'm going to go this way, start with Mr. Alarcon, then Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Kocorian. Questions to the Department of Water and Power. And when we are done with this round, then we'll have PA Consulting come up. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kretz is here too.
Actually, I have several areas that I wanted to cover. But one area that I did not hear any discussion about is what is our current, what are our current requirements from the state of California with regard to transitioning to renewable sources?
Councilmember Larry Pasquet, the current requirements under AB 32, AB 32 does apply to the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. It applies to the entire electric sector. And the requirements, which regulations to add more specificity to the statute are being promulgated. And there will be a mix of what we've been told, excuse me, command and control and a potential cap and trade. The requirements are greenhouse gas emission reductions. And the trajectory that we're on right now, and I actually brought some extra copies of this slide just in case a question came up, are going from 17 and a half million metric tons to roughly 14 and a half million metric tons. In addition to that, last year, after two RPS renewable portfolio standard bills failed passage, which Mr. Kocorian watched closely and had a leadership role in, the governor issued an executive-
He had a leadership role in killing it or moving it forward?
In moving it forward and supporting renewable energy. The governor issued an executive order and directed the chair of the airboard, under her AB 32 authority, to promulgate regulations by July of 2010 that would apply renewable energy standard to the electric sector. So all public and privates at 33%. The draft is out, and they expect to have the rules in place in July.
Okay, so based on the draft, do, under the current rate structure, do we anticipate that we will meet our requirements?
It's a good question. What, I should let Jeff answer that question, under the current rate structure.
Under the current, the .1 cent per kilowatt hour per quarter, we can't, we can't meet that and maintain it.
And if we do not meet it, what would the likely scenario be?
The likely scenario is very quickly, we do not meet our financial targets and we-
But why?
Because that goes into that chart I was showing, where we're going to be under-collecting by roughly $250 million a year. So we will receive in revenue $250 million less than what our expenditures are.
Okay, the question is, would, essentially, the California Air Resources Board, would we get a fine as a result of not meeting our requirements?
Would we get, I just want to repeat the question so I understand it. Would the Department of Water and Power get fined if we didn't meet the carbon reduction targets?
Under the current rate restructure, under the current rates, if we move forward without changing the rates upward, it has been stated that we would not meet our renewable goals that are required by the state of California. If that occurs, would we receive a fine?
Let me explain two pieces of it where there's potential economic liability for the department. Because I think that's the question. So if we don't stay on the current transition path to both reduce the carbon footprint and to have a renewable portfolio mix, there are two potential economic hardships that could impact the city and the department. The first is through a cap and trade. And they're still deciding if it will be a, an auction with 100% purchase requirements or less than 100% purchase requirements. The higher level of carbon emissions we have from our coal and natural gas plants, the higher the requirement is to the department to buy the permits to cover, similar to the asset-
You know what, you're saying a lot of shop talk. This is a public hearing, and I want everybody to understand what you're saying. It's going to cost us more, is what you're getting at. I'd just like to know how much more?
If there's 100% auction in 2012, it will be between $600 million and $1 billion. If there are fines-
It would cost us $600 million to a billion more if we maintain the current rates?
If there is 100% auction with the cap and trade.
And that does not count potential fines?
That does not count potential fines if there is a RES, a renewable energy standard adopted, and the airboard chooses to issue fines if an electric sector, a utility, doesn't meet the 20% and 33% targets.
You said there's a draft, have you reviewed the draft guidelines?
I have not completely reviewed the most recent draft today, but I-
Based on that draft, are we going to be fined?
I think we're not going to know until the final draft's adopted in July.
Okay, so, but there is a potential, if we do not meet that, those requirements, that we could be fined?
Absolutely, and that's why the governor put the jurisdiction-
We will have a much clearer picture on that in July?
We will.
That's right.
We will.
Okay, so, so in July we'll have a much better idea-
Carbon requirements.
Whether we need it, okay.
Right.
Okay, so then, we're looking at, moving forward, this, this potential billion-dollar shortfall that you're talking about would occur by what date?
The $600 million to $1 billion, and if there's an auction, it would begin to occur in 2012.
And spread over what period of time? Immediately, just at that point?
It's an annual cost.
It would be in hoc for about a billion? It's an annual cost? Would it be a recurring annual cost? So every year we'd be short $600 million to $1 billion?
Councilmember, I think if you look on page 20 of the PowerPoint, you'll see those numbers.
Okay. Okay, the second area of questioning is with regard to the market. How stable is the natural gas, I mean, you only went to 2013. How stable are the prices for the various sources of energy that you've described? I mean, how stable are they? Is natural gas an endless source? Is it going to be increasing over a period of time? When we purchase power, we typically purchase in increments of 20 years, correct?
For the renewables, yes.
For the renewables, so assuming that we purchase in 20-year increments, I mean, what's likely to happen with the price of these various sources of energy?
I mean, what we see on natural gas, it's going to be increasing. I mean, we talked about through that, the increase of 220. When you look at Katrina, when Katrina came through and it destroyed a lot of the infrastructure down in the Gulf, that increased natural gas prices substantially. I don't know if Arum remembers the specific number, I think it was $11, $12. That's part of the program where we, where I think that PA came in and looked at the volatility that helps, that that is something that can happen, and often it comes out of nowhere. You don't know where, these drastic market increases are unexpected. Part of what we do, and even that is considered in there to keep the limit to .8, is our hedging program. We hedge roughly 50% of our volume of gas. We go out on a volumetric basis. So by the time we get to a new fiscal year, we have roughly 50% of that gas to limit the volatility. But we still need the .8 cents even with all that hedging.
And what's going to happen with wind and solar?
Wind and solar, once we have it in, it's not going to change. I mean, that is the nice thing about it, is that it, once you establish that asset, you put in a wind plant, you're going to have some O and M, but generally that's a lower percentage, and then that cost will be there for the next 20 years.
So it's a flat cost. You said that if we purchase natural gas, it could go up?
Natural gas-
So we lock in the purchase, not the price?
We lock in, no, we lock, we have a combination. We own one gas field that we bought at about $4 per MMBTU, which is a very good price. We also do some financial hedges. That was, that was established, I believe, in the early part of last decade to limit the volatility in the natural gas, the financial hedges.
I'm just, if we lock in the price and the price goes up-
Right.
We're better to have locked it in, correct?
Correct. But then, in the same respect, you're also, similar to what happened, the natural gas price tends to go with the economy. So when the economy went down after the collapse, the price of natural gas went down, again-
Sort of like a swap deal?
It's, I wouldn't want to call it that. I would call it that, we limit our volatility. So what it does is it keeps you on the market, and you don't get the up and down as much.
But if there's an extreme occurrence and it drops radically, we lose a lot of money?
Or, or if it goes up a lot, we-
That could happen in any one of these sources.
Any way, right. That's why I always say, what we do with that is we're limiting our volatility, we're not really saving the money.
Okay, now the tier, in terms of the board's action to, with regard to rate restructuring?
Right.
The board, if we don't pass the ECAF, then an action will come to us to increase the rates more significantly? The council has not taken an action to increase the rates, or have we?
You have not taken an action to increase the rates. As I said, we got the two-part ECAF and the base rates. And the base rates, we are not going to increase those in the 10-11 fiscal year, and ECAF is going to go up, that's the request.
Right, but when you were talking about Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3, you were talking about the ECAF.
Right, and what that is, that's a companion resolution that will be coming before this body will go to ENE first, and will be coming to this body hopefully by July.
I understand that, but my question is, you break out A and B.
Right.
A being the average monthly bill increase without rate restructuring.
Right.
So if we take no action, these rates will automatically occur, or do they have to come back to council?
No, that, what you see in A is that average monthly bill increase without rate restructure is that the ECAF would be passed, but the rate restructure would not. And so that, so for example, in the Zone 1-
No, I understand the rate restructure would not, but these, the charges in blue would automatically occur? Or would you have to come back to council for approval?
I think if ECAF is approved, that would automatically occur.
No. If ECAF isn't approved?
Then these rates only reflect ECAF being approved, not without ECAF.
So-
It would be much less for any of them because we'd only have a .1 cent per kilowatt hour increase.
I'm not asking that question. I'm just asking about what you have in blue or what you have in green. The blue will, I'm trying to get a feel of whether it has to come to council.
The rate restructure for the residential customers?
Right, well, for all the customers, yeah.
Yes, that has to come, and the ECAF increase is before you now.
No. The rates that you were describing, the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3-
Right.
Are ECAF increases, correct?
It's a combination of base rates and ECAF.
Okay, okay, because, okay. So in blue, let's just look at Tier 1, Zone 1.
Okay.
The blue says 227.
Right, okay, yes, it says 227.
Will that happen if we take no action?
No.
Okay, it will only happen if the council approves it?
That will only happen if the ECAF, as it presently stands, is approved and the rate restructure is not.
Okay. And then, the 1.19, the $1.19, occurs if we approve the restructuring?
As well as the ECAF.
As well as ECAF.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Before we go on to the next councilperson, I have two questions. First one is, the debt reserve fund was set up to protect the department from deregulation over 10 years ago, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're reading a reso, I, it's there for the debt reduction-
Conceptually, conceptually, the debt reserve fund was set up to protect the department from deregulation over a decade ago, conceptually.
It was set up to, the push at that time was to reduce the debt levels for the department. And by utilizing that cash fund, which could only go to debt service, if you could economically defees other bonds, you could utilize that fund to do that.
Okay, so let me ask you this.
Okay.
Debt, deregulation is no longer an issue, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, stranded costs, they're no longer an issue either, right?
Correct.
Okay, so deregulation is no longer an issue, stranded costs are no longer an issue. I'm correct on both of those points? Yes? Okay. So then why do we still have restrictions on this fund?
The, again, that's something that if, if we take the restrictions off that fund, what we're going to have to do is increase our unrestricted cash level. If you look at, I did a brief calculation, you know, again, I was asked by councilmember Labange, how much do we go through on a daily basis? It's roughly $8 million. If you look in the, in the PA report, they talk about a, that the peer review, I just want to find it, I believe was 102 days. So if you take that out, 102 days times $8 million, obviously is $816 million, which is about the debt reduction trust fund plus our $300 million.
But, again, deregulation's not an issue, stranded costs not an issue, no restrictions on the fund. Does that free up, again, just for the record, does that free up $500 million or not?
I would not say it frees up $500 million. What it would do is if we could look at the transition, and I, it's such a large decision, councilmember, I wouldn't want to answer you right now until I talk to our financial advisor.
Okay, that's one question, another question I want to tell the CAO to take a look at for me. And then, back to the- for me, and then, back to the department, one quick question. Between the ECAF, proposed ECAF increase, and the base rate increases, what are we looking at as a total increase through 2014? Okay, you're talking about, let's say we pass the whole thing. We have an ECAF increase plus the base rate increase beginning 2011, 2012 through 2014.
Okay.
So what's the percentage of the total increase?
So if I look at the 2014, the price would be $167 per megawatt hour, and 2011, did you want to use?
Well, that's what you guys said.
Okay, so 2011 is $144, so that is about a 16% increase. I think we could go to 2010, maybe, you have 167.
[inaudible].
That's a 36% increase.
Okay, so cumulatively, with the ECAF plus base rate increases, what is the total percentage we're looking at through 2014?
From 11, if you take 2011 to 2014, the cumulative increase is 16%.
That includes ECAF plus base rate?
From 2011 to 2014, that's why, councilmember, I was asking if you want 2010, which is where we are today.
All right, then put 2010 in there.
Okay.
And tell me what it comes up to.
[inaudible].
Right, yeah, it's a total of 37%.
37%.
Yes.
All right.
Over a 1, 2, 3, 4, 4-year period.
That 37% over a 4-year period, and that's assuming you have an ECAF plus all the base rate increases.
That's correct.
Okay, now then, by 2014, how much money would then be in the trust fund?
$666 million.
No, in the trust fund would be $666 million.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Cardness, and then we'll go to Mr. Coretts, and Mr. Corian after that.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at one of your latest correspondence to the City Council dated March 24, and it's a two-page letter addressed to the City Council members, it appears. And on the second page, it says, "We take our obligations to the city with the utmost seriousness, and have done much to alleviate the city's fiscal crisis. However, it will be impossible for the L D W P to identify additional surplus funds if the requisite adjustment to the ECAF is not approved as a final action under the city charter by March 31, 2010." And it's signed by Ramon Raj, Chief Operating Officer and also Acting General Manager. I guess Mr. Freeman is out of the city or out of the country?
Out of the country.
Okay, so you're the man for now until he gets back.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ramon Raj. Now, looking at your statement to the City Council about the utmost seriousness when you take into account your obligations, my question, the question that came to mind when I read this was, if you take your obligations with the utmost seriousness, why did the board wait until March 18, 2010, to addendize the rate hike issue that we're discussing today?
If you don't mind, let me just go back a little bit in time, and I can talk it there.
Sure. It's your answer, Mr. Ramon Raj, not mine.
Thank you. We, this whole discussion on ECAF started last year, as you may recall, in the fall. So the first time we did come here in the fall, it was sent back, and we were waiting for the PA.
In August.
August, last year.
In August, a vote took place by the Department of Water and Power.
Yes.
And then the City Council asserted jurisdiction.
Yes.
And then the action of the council was to reject it in August of 2009.
Right, and also, a third party was then asked to do an evaluation.
Which is today known as the PA consulting report?
Yes. So we had really asked for .5 cent, and the PA came in and did their analysis, and honestly, we were waiting for their report before we could go to our board. And I think within, I don't want, I think within a couple of weeks after we got, the board was, the report was released, or even less than that, we went straight to the board. So the timing was dictated a lot by when PA's report was released. So we didn't have control over that.
Okay, now, but I'm looking at the report, and it seems to be dated February 25, 2010.
Yes. And when did we get the report? I can't remember the exact date that we received it.
Take your time.
I think it was somewhere around there, a little bit after.
If the report is dated the 25th, you received it perhaps the 26th, the 27th?
So that Friday is when we got the report, so basically, the 1st of March. And then we had to schedule a board meeting. First, we had to, we had to take some time to analyze what the report said, make sure, you know, we had digested the information, and then write our recommendation to the board. And that took some time to get that done, and then it was a matter of scheduling. And two of our board members were traveling out of town. They were out of California. So, and we, as you may know, we only have four board members now. We don't have five, because one of our board members is no longer there. So it was a very difficult scheduling issue, getting the board meeting scheduled.
Sure, and you are part of the staff at the Department of Water and Power. The staff does not make board appointments, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, and who makes the appointments to the board of the Department of Water and Power?
I believe the mayor does, subject to confirmation by the council.
Sure. And when the mayor makes an appointment to fill a vacancy, does that vacancy get filled, and the person can be a voting member, even though it's still going through the ratification process? Is there some kind of grace period? And if you don't have that answer, perhaps the CLA or the CAO, perhaps the CLA or CAO or somebody here, or the city attorney, has the answer to the question as to if there's a vacancy on the Department of Water and Power Board, and the mayor makes an appointment, does that person, upon the notification that the mayor is making that appointment, at what time does that person technically have the right to be a voting member of that board?
Counsel member, I would have to double-check, but if memory serves me right, you cannot become a voting member until you've been confirmed by the council.
Okay. So you're sure about that, or pretty sure?
I can double-check my partner.
Okay, I'd appreciate if you would double-check that. Now, Mr. Ramon Raj, you mentioned that at this point in time, or at least through the month of March, there are only four out of five potential board members, or only four slots filled out of five. And in order to have a meeting of that board of substance, meaning that you have to have at least the majority, that means they have to confirm three members present in order for them to vote or ratify anything, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Was that vacancy, was that, did that vacancy occur in February, in January? When did that vacancy occur, the current vacancy?
I believe the February 26th, the last, that Friday, the last Friday of February, I can't, February 26th, I believe.
Who was that member that?
Ms. Ramirez.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Ms. Edith Ramirez.
Edith Ramirez, okay. Now, what recommendations did the staff make to the board, or what communication did the staff make to the board about the urgency of the board convening and deciding whether or not they wanted to take action on the, whether it be .5 cents per kilowatt hour, .8 cents or what have you, but that some incremental change needed to be made to the ECAF?
I think we've been making that point since August of last year, so as soon as we finished analyzing the PA report, and we had our recommendation ready, we approached the board right away with the urgency that we needed to get this done, to get it down to the city councils in time for the April 1 effective date.
Now, how much time does it take for the department, for the board, to decide that they want to have a board meeting? How much time, minimum time needs to go by before they can actually convene a board meeting and addendize an item?
I'll have to ask legal on that.
Sure. There's a lot of minds sitting here, ready to answer questions. Take your time.
Counsel member, absent a defined emergency under the Brown Act, it would be a 24-hour special meeting.
Okay.
And the circumstances wouldn't constitute a defined emergency.
So therefore, the default timeline would be a 24-hour minimum.
24-hour special meeting.
24 hours minimum, posting, et cetera, in order to comply with the Brown Act.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Ramon Raj, are you familiar with whether or not the board in the past has actually convened a meeting of urgency as quickly as legally possible?
I personally do not recall, but I'm sure they have. I personally do not recall something happening the last couple of years. I personally don't remember something like that.
Okay, well, I personally know that they have, when the department was motivated to do so, because I monitored that particular situation in which they did convene that meeting. So it can be done.
It can be done, absolutely.
And it has been done. Now, the reason why I ask you that question is because I think that the message that was conveyed very publicly by the mayor of the City of Los Angeles through a document that was put out by his office, and it says, "Energy Cost Adjustment Factor, Carbon Reduction Surcharge," and this is all on the front page of this document, it says, "Issue Briefing for the Honorable Members of the Los Angeles City Council," and it says, "Office of the Mayor, Antonio R. Villarosa, March 22, 2010." This document that I'm referring to certainly concurs with much of the information and rhetoric coming out of the Department of Water and Power on this matter. And so my next question, in light of all of that urgency toward the City Council, to either not take jurisdiction of this matter, or just allow it to occur without taking jurisdiction, or if we do take jurisdiction, basically putting pressure on us to just allow it to take place before March 31. The question that I have to you right now is, at what point in time did the staff at the Department of Water and Power and/or the board start to get the feeling that the City Council might take jurisdiction and interfere with that urgency and the matter of having to make the first adjustment, quarterly adjustment by April 1? When did you get the first impression that, oops, maybe the City Council isn't going to go along with this?
I think we had more than an impression, because the City Council didn't go along last year, so we, there's always that possibility, very, very clear possibility.
Okay, so let me be more specific. After the Department of Water and Power took the vote, the board took the vote on March 18.
Yes, sir.
Did the staff and/or the board get any strong signals from anybody, perhaps the chairwoman of the Energy Committee, or the president of the council, or anybody over here, they could make a motion to assert jurisdiction and interfere with that timeline? Did you get any message, anything that you could call tangible, anytime after March 18, or before, we actually had the motion before the council a few days ago?
Yeah, no, I mean, after the board acted on it, informally, yes, we did.
Okay. So that being the case, it leads me to my next question. What took, what action did the board take on March 18, the DWP board? What action did they take place that is relevant to April 1 of 2010?
The matter before you on the ECAF, on the ECAF adjustment, yes, sir. What was the action itself?
Yes.
Okay, well, asking for, actually, authorizing a modification to the ECAF cap.
Correct, the modification that would take place, moving it from .1 cents per kilowatt hour to .8 cents per kilowatt hour, and that would take place beginning on April 1?
Yes, sir.
Okay, of 2010? So since March, basically, March, the evening of March 18 or March 19, it was pretty clear that this issue of April 1 being jeopardized might take place. The jeopardizing of the April 1 .8% potential increase, why didn't, why didn't the staff and/or the board convene a meeting to address that one incremental increase? I'll help you out by asking this question. It appears that the board could have taken the first .8 cent increase as a single vote item, and then all of the subsequent matters relevant to the subsequent quarters, because it's four quarters, right? The action was taken delineating four subsequent quarters, correct?
That's correct.
Why is it that the board didn't take the first .8 cent increase as a separate vote item and separate the other subsequent quarterly increases?
And I think the way the motion, the board did, it was, in effect, does what I think you just described, because even though they approved this cap increase, it does ask us to come back every quarter, so we do have to go to the board again in July, I mean, June, for the July 1 increase, and which, again, would be subject to the same 245. So even though it's authorized, we can't automatically do it. We have to keep coming, go back every quarter to get the increase actually authorized.
Okay, that's not my understanding. I understand what you're saying, but I don't read it as being that simplistic and that clear. But let's take a few minutes. I've been asked by the chairwoman to table my questions for a little bit, and then we'll go back to the agenda as the chair wishes.
For purposes of time, I want to ask the DWP folks to please step back for a second, stay here, and get PA consulting up here to, because they have some time constraints. And to the consultants, I know one of you has to leave at 10 after 5, but members of your team can remain for the questions?
Yes.
Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, all right, and then we'll get back to DWP. Now, you presented your findings in council the other day, but for the benefit of the people who have not heard them, can you succinctly elaborate on the key components of your recommendations regarding the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor?
Yes. Our recommendation is that the council, as quickly as possible, pass a .8 cent increase in the ECAF one time, at the same time that it order that the ECAF be reconstituted, as we described, breaking out the renewables, energy efficiency, and city transfer portion, and leaving only the commodity portion in, and that the rate restructuring proposed by the department be looked at further to see if it has the right policy goals, and if the impacts on businesses are understood and acknowledged as the right policy. And then, thirdly, that opportunities for cost reductions in the department's proposed budgets be examined to see if some of the increases could be either postponed or are not needed at this point in time.
All right, now, for the record, are you in fact recommending that a full 2.7 per kilowatt increase over four quarters, or is it actually a .8 per kilowatt by April 1, and then reevaluate ECAF objectives?
It would be the latter, the .8 now, the 2.7 not be approved fully, because I think there are too many outstanding issues. And as we discussed at council the other day, it may be that if you achieve some of the cost reductions or some of the other things, that you may not need the full 2.7.
Can you elaborate on what you perceive to be the outstanding issues regarding the 2.7 cent per kilowatt hour increase?
So the 2.7 is based on the department's five-year financial plan. That plan has rapid growth in several of the programs. DSM is increasing significantly over current levels. RPS spending is increasing significantly, and in these particular economic times, it may be prudent to look at whether or not all of the things in those plans need to be achieved at this point in time. There's also, obviously, uncertainty about what will happen with commodity prices and things like that. Restructuring the ECAF will go a long way towards helping the department maintain its bond ratings. Uncapping the commodity portion and separating out the other portions will certainly help. There are also issues that the councilperson raised today in terms of the debt reduction trust funds and how those might be used. So I'd say there's a fair amount of uncertainty. And that's just dealing with what PA has recommended. If we were to look at the board action that was taken that's before the board, we think there's even more uncertainty that needs to be reviewed.
A key component of your recommendations is that the ECAF should address the concerns of bond rating agencies. Explain to us what that means.
So as we discussed the other day, and as Mr. Petola talked about today, the department to maintain its bond rating needs to to maintain its bond rating, needs to maintain certain cash coverage ratios. Right now, it's 2.25. We think that actually could be even higher, 2.4, because of the way they do some off-balance sheet accounting. So to do that, if you look at their current plan and the expenditures they're going to make, they will get below those ratios, and they could get significantly below them to the point where they could be downgraded.
I'm going to ask this question of you, and I'm going to ask the Department of Water and Power again when they come back to the table. Is it possible that we could adopt a lower amount by April 1st, lower than .8, such as .5, .6? And tell me what the consequences of a lower amount would be.
So as the department CFO mentioned, beginning in the new fiscal year, which is just a few months away, the department ramps up its spending significantly, almost from the very beginning of the year. If they incur that level of expenditures without the increase of at least .5, and that assumes that everything else in the world goes perfectly.
So is .5 cent, .5 cent, is that the minimum amount that the department would need to be, remain solvent in the immediate future?
So .5, assuming everything went exactly as according to their plan, so gas or coal prices didn't change, the renewable projects came in, it leaves them no cushion directly associated to that. But, you know, could that work for a quarter while the department continues to, I mean, while, excuse me, while the council continues to study these other matters? It might well. The issue there would be, how would the rating agencies perceive the difference between .5 versus the .8 that the department briefed all the rating agencies they were asking and seeking? The rating agencies are sophisticated. They realize that what the department asks may not necessarily be what it gets, but there is some risk of negative reaction from the agencies with a lower amount. But to answer your question directly, could the department, if everything goes exactly as according to plan, live with .5 for a quarter? I suspect the answer would be yes.
Now, in terms of your, wait, say that again, .5, you suspect that...
The answer would be yes.
Okay, great. In terms of your proposal to reconstitute, one of the key benefits of breaking up the ECAF into different pieces is that you gain transparency. Can you elaborate on what gaining transparency means to the ratepayer?
I think it means lower rates going forward to the ratepayer. I think by breaking up the ECAF, leaving only the commodity portion in the ECAF, having a separate account for RPS and a separate account for DSM, and dealing with the transfer payment in general rates, anytime there's a change in the RPS program or the DSM program, they'll have to come before council and explain while they're seeking a rate increase exactly what the benefits of that are. If you don't do that, and you leave the ECAF the way it is, and you continue to have one giant bucket that everything is left in, you don't have transparency. You have the situation you have today where it's difficult to know exactly what is spent for what, how much each program costs, and where all the money going, money goes.
So that's a difference in practices before the unhealthy ECAF and what's proposed through your report, which would change the, I guess, the culture of disclosure?
Yeah, they have to, because all RPS things would be in one discrete account, all DSM would be in another. It's one of the key differences between the board action and what we've recommended. So in the board action, you have ECAF sort of as it is, and then the RPS and DSM moved into funded by this trust fund, you know, and they would only use the trust fund if there were no significant stress events. But the problem with that is, once you hired, you know, 18,000 workers, or you've put more renewables online, once you've spent that money, it's spent. So if you spent the full .7 that was to go into the trust fund, you can't get it back. So anything unexpected after you funded the trust fund will be an additional rate increase. So it actually turns out to, by using that .7 that way, if you don't have the stress event in the first year, and you've spent the .7, you've then increased rates, not to 2.7, but actually to 3.4.
So are you saying that by having a .8, that gives you some headroom?
No, what I'm saying, they're specifically related to the trust fund, is it's actually an additional rate increase.
Okay, thank you. So the fiscal viability of uncapping a true fuel-based ECAF, would ratepayers actually see savings or lower rates if fuel prices actually dropped if we don't have a cap on an ECAF?
So if commodity prices drop, such as natural gas prices have, and you, and you trued that up every quarter, consumers would, when commodity prices drop, would, should actually see the true ECAF portion decline? And likewise, if commodity prices spike up, to the extent that the department's hedging programs haven't caught them, rates could float. But on, you know, on balance, you know, they'll move with the market. But is the answer, could they see a rate increase and a decrease, and could they see one potentially this year? Yes, potentially, they could.
Okay, shed, shed some light on the $130 million under collection within ECAF related to fuel prices, and tell us how that occurred.
John?
In 2008...
And identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Jonathan Jacobs, PA Consulting. In 2008, fossil fuel prices spiked greatly. Natural gas prices were up around $11 and $13 per million BTUs, which is significantly higher than they are now. The department incurred very high purchase costs, procurement costs, in 2008, well in excess of what their, the ECAF rate covered at the time. That under collection has not been completely amortized still. Although gas prices went down last year and have stayed significantly below those levels, and the department has been able to reduce the level of that deficit, there is still about $120, $130 million remaining as of the time we analyzed it.
Okay. In your analysis, what's the overall impact to ratepayers if this full 2.7 kilowatt, 2.7 cents is achieved? And then also, what's the impact after the first .8 cent per kilowatt hour to the ratepayers?
This is Mark Hagan with PA Consulting. For the full 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour, our analysis would show that for most customers, a 21 percent increase in rates would be expected, and for a 0.8 cent per kilowatt hour increase, it would be a 6 percent increase in rates for most customers.
Okay, and then what's the impact, just to break this down for me, impact on low-income and lifeline customers? And is there a way to shield them from this kind of an increase?
The impact of, on low-income and lifeline customers in terms of dollars per month is approximately the same, although because low-income and lifeline customers are currently subsidized, it looks like more on a percentage basis. If, if the council, and I believe this would have to be a change to the rating ordinance, if the council wanted to shield those customers in some way from the increase in ECAF, it could exempt them from an ECAF increase, but that would mean that there would have to be a concomitant ECAF increase, in other words, a greater ECAF increase on remaining customers. For example, if the total ECAF rate needed to be increased 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour, and you exempted low-income and lifeline customers from that increase, then instead, the ECAF increase on other customers would be 2.9 cents per kilowatt hour. In other words, there would be about a 2 points, there would be about a 0.2 cents addition.
Okay, as we previously discussed, the coal issue, and it's discussed in your report and the department's reliance on it, can you just highlight that again? I think it was five years, there's nothing in there to reduce our reliance on coal for at least five years, is that correct?
Right, so in the department's current five-year fiscal plan that gets you through the 2014 period, there are no plans to reduce the reliance on coal. What was talked about by, today by the Assistant General Manager for Power was, they are able to get some, some benefits during off-peak hours to be able to dispatch more wind if it's available, or more solar if it's available, in which case they would back off coal. But that doesn't change their contractual commitments and what they have in their base plan.
Okay. And given the department's objectives for the renewable portfolio standard, even if we achieve 20 percent or beyond, will we still be reliant on coal?
The 20 percent plan continues to maintain the current levels of coal generation, yes.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make sure that we get questions from the other members. I know you can say, and then we'll go back to the department. Mr. Coretts, if you'd like to give your questions to PA Consulting, you can go next, and then Mr. Alarcon.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of questions, but one that I wanted to ask was, your plan has an increase over four consecutive quarters, excuse me, to, to not shock the customer by putting it all at once. Could it not be spread out even longer to make that shock more digestible? Could it be done every other quarter, for instance? And how would that impact the overall projections?
So the driver for that, again, is maintaining the bond rating. So if you assume the department spends at the levels in the plan, then somewhere between .5 and .8 per quarter is going to be necessary to maintain that. I think the levers you have to spread that out, or to reduce the size of it, are to reduce the expenditure levels, to say, I don't want you to spend at this level, I want you to spend at this level. But if they spend at the levels in the plan, then if you spread it out over more quarters, you're going to fall below where you need to be.
So you don't see anything beyond the increase every quarter approach that we could do to lessen the blow?
I think that's, I think that's a different question. I see, I see there are other steps that the council and the department could take together. I think looking at how the debt reduction trust fund is used is one. I think looking at expenditure levels and perhaps making some tough decisions in that area are another. I think there are a variety of steps that you could take over the next few months that could minimize the impact or lessen the quarterly shock of doing that. But I think if you commit to the funding levels in the plan, then you're committing to somewhere between .5 and .8.
Right, and I have a particular reason to focus more clearly, because I think my district is, is the one district that has a much more significant impact than the others, because we have a much larger tier three category. For instance, if you compare our district and council member Reyes's district, he has a .1, and we have a 13+, so it's something like 130 times the impact in tier three. So that could have a somewhat devastating impact on my district, particularly in the business community, which I think will be hammered pretty strongly.
Yeah.
So whatever ways we can find, if, if this were to go forward at this large a number to try and mitigate that impact, I'd certainly be looking for that.
Yeah, and I, as I said, I think there are a variety of measures that are available, and it's why we urged only approving a portion of it now, and really studying how you can bring the total number down. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to get your answers with regard to the questions with regard to possible fines in the future. The department represented that there could be a potential, under, under the existing rate structure, that there could be a potential of $600 million to $1 billion a year in fines. Could you, what would your, did you look into that?
We did. So we looked at it in two different ways. We looked at sort of CO2 regulations that would be in the $47 a ton ratio, which was based on the current, at that time, the current proposed carb standards, and then $23 a ton, which, and these are in 2014, which is close to what the federal standard was expected to be. So we get a range of between $330 million and $749 million, so less than the department's representative, but still significant. I think the important point is there, we don't know. Those rules have not been put out yet, and until they're out, and there's considerable pressure to mitigate them.
But you're saying 340...
330...
330 at a minimum?
Well...
Under the current rate?
If you...
Or let me put it another way, in your analysis, you calculated...
We looked at, we looked at...
That level of fines?
We looked at proposed and estimated carbon costs, and so at $23 a ton, which is close to what the federal might be, if it's put forward, that's around the $300 million number.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, you factored that into your .8 percent recommendation?
We factored it in, no, we factored it into one of the scenarios we looked at. We looked at a scenario that said, if a CO2 regime is imposed in California, what are the likely additional impacts? And so the...
Okay, so...
The 2.7 will not cover that at all.
The 2.7 will not cover...
No. No.
Okay.
And there is no...
Now, you recommended .8. What, you, does that fact, that doesn't factor in any fines? That's just to, just to get them afloat.
Right, so the imposition of fines is still obviously a matter under discussion.
Okay, now, would you agree that in July, we're going to know a heck of a lot more about that?
If the actual ARB rules are finalized and adopted and published, then we will certainly have more information, yes.
But your, your assumption is that what there will be, with a .8, is there will be zero fines?
So we, because we based this on the department's five-year plan, they had assumed for planning purposes, no CO2 regime being imposed on them. We looked at that, and that's how we, and we based it on that. We ran scenarios that said, it could cost this much more. So if you, if you wanted to, you know, starting in 2012, when this could go into effect, if you wanted to build that into rates, but I wouldn't do that until I knew what the rules were. I wouldn't, it's, again, it's, it's only speculation.
In other words, in other words, we raise the rates again later?
If those rules are adopted and put into effect, there will definitely be a future rate impact, yes. And depending on, on the, you know, the cost per ton, it could be very significant.
When you say significant, what would that do to the 2.7? Let's assume, let's assume they were $343 million, I think that was what you said.
Well, let's round numbers, just say, it's the billion dollars, as mentioned by the department's representative. That's about 4 cents additional rate impact. So it would be, if 2.7 is the largest single rate increase in the department's history, 4 cents would be...
Now, what kind of action should we take to prevent any kind of fine?
That's a political question for the department in terms of, what positions are they taking in terms of trying to impact how the rules are...
I think it's a political question for us, I don't know if it's a political question for the department, but...
Yeah, it's a policy question, and so the policy is, what positions do you want the department and your legislative personnel taking with ARB and with the governor? What steps do you want to do to help mitigate that as much as possible? Once the rules are out, the rules will be out.
Okay, and on the...
And we've also talked about the importance of the Integrated Resource Plan. It's absolutely a question you can deal with in the Integrated Resource Plan, in terms of, do you put more natural gas units into play, things like that?
If, if, if we adopted the higher rates that the mayor and commission propose, would that give us additional resources to stave off the potential for fines?
It's very unclear in the board's package as to how the money in the, the RPS trust fund would actually be used, and over what period of time. So the answer is, I don't know, because there's no, there's no details available to answer your question.
So one of your recommendations might be to address that?
Our recommendation is that the RPS should be, should be funded completely separately... Our recommendation is that the RPS should be funded completely separately, should be completely transparent, and that that should absolutely be addressed in the Integrated Resource Plan, yes.
Okay, that's, I think that is something that we need to do. There's no question about it. I don't make any assumptions about fines, but I recognize that we're probably not doing enough to meet the standard that the state will create, whatever that standard may be. It's hard to know right now without the final guidelines.
It is, it's difficult, and I think certainly we'll know more in July.
Jan, I wanted to ask a couple of questions that you, what were the questions that we were talking about? No, Ramon, just to remind me what I was going to ask.
We were talking about the debt reduction and using that to.
Oh, yes, with regard to the, yeah, with regard to the debt reduction fund. It's at $580 million, I think I've heard, is that correct?
Somewhere in that order, yes.
Okay, and the department established a limit at $300 million to maintain in the fund at a minimum.
I have not seen the ordinance that established the rules of the fund, so.
But in your report, you say that that appears to be adequate, so I assume you looked at it.
Well, you're talking about the cash levels that the department needs to make. Okay, so the debt reduction fund has not been applied in counting how the department meets its ratios.
But in your report, you say that it is prudent to suggest that the establishment of this $300 million essentially reserve, as a reserve, would help us sustain the AA rating?
Yeah, that's Mark Hagan again. Let me clarify, there are two different funds that are being discussed. One is the Power Revenue Fund, and that's the one for which the department has a $300 million goal. The Debt Service Reduction Fund is a separate fund, which is over and above that Power Revenue Fund. And so when we looked at it, the department's $300 million goal in the Power Revenue Fund was only adequate if you considered that the Debt Service Reduction Fund was there as well. And so I think, we haven't looked at it in the detail that you're asking today, but some of what the department was mentioning earlier is that if you eliminate the Debt Service Reduction Fund, it would probably require an increase in the Power Revenue Fund.
Bottom line is, it could affect our AA rating.
It could, it could.
So, and you said that it seemed to be reasonable, I read that specifically in your report.
It was based on, and as the department CFO mentioned, it was based on looking at their peers. So is that a reasonable level, based on their peer groups, based on their desired bond rating? And based on those two things, it is.
Well, based on the desired bond rating?
Right.
Let's agree that we all want a AA rating. I don't think there's any question about that. So I'm reading your report to say that if you want a AA rating, that's a reasonable reserve?
It is. But if you have a policy objective also of minimizing a rate increase, and you have something available to you, such as the Debt Reduction Trust Fund, it's certainly worth looking at, and we have not done this, how that might be important.
So some people would say, well, why don't we spend the Debt Reduction Fund to lower our debt?
And I think the answer is, we don't know yet, one, all the rules that govern it, and two, all of the impacts. We need to look at that, so I can't really answer.
But it could have a negative effect on our bond rating, if we did that, if we spent it.
You know, these things, you have to look at them in their entirety. And so until we do that, I'm really reluctant to say if it would or if it wouldn't.
But that's not something you looked at?
No, it's something we could look at very quickly.
Is it the department's position that they have to maintain this account as a reserve?
I'll leave that for Mr. Petola to answer.
Mr. Petola, is that your position? He's nodding yes, so that's why they keep such a substantial amount. That's why they don't use it to write down their debt, although they do use it to take advantage of opportunities as they emerge to buy down debt quickly. In any case, it is something that is curious to me, why you would have $580 million sitting in a pot and then buy $3 billion in debt going forward. But, and believe me, I know more about bond ratings than I ever wanted to know this year. And I don't like them, to begin with. These bond rates, it's almost like they're holding a gun to DWP's head, saying, don't write down your debt so you can pay higher interest on debt and keep your money making no interest, or .15% interest. They're ripoff artists, but that's a different issue. Could you analyze that? Okay, I have enough questions for now, thank you.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you. Your report was dated February 25th. When was this made available to the public?
On February 25th. If it was published, put on the city's website on that day.
Okay. We can assume safely that the sophisticated people who do bond rating analyses for municipal utilities would probably have had this on or shortly after February 25th, could we not?
They have researchers who are in the business of doing this, and also I know the department has shared it with them as well.
Okay. So when Fitch issued its rating of DWP's creditworthiness on March 18th, it's safe to assume that they would have read and considered PA Consulting's concerns before issuing that report, is that safe to assume?
I know they had access to the report.
The report, okay. And yet, with all of the concerns that you've expressed, and even though acknowledging in their March 18th analysis that the city council still needs to approve any changes in the ECAF, Fitch maintained the existing AA bond rating for DWP, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'll come back to that in a minute, but I want to talk for a little bit about some of the differences between what you evaluated and what the DWP board voted upon on March 18th. Now, what would be the cost to ratepayers of programs that were considered by the board on March 18th and approved that were not before you when you made your analysis?
So we think that the way the motion has come to you to approve, it's approximately $160 million a year in new programs that were not part of the plans that we reviewed. Those additional programs, we don't believe are required to meet the department's goal of 20% renewables or energy demand reduction, they're in addition to. So it's why I mentioned in my remarks a few moments ago that we actually think it could, what we analyzed as sort of a maximum 2.7 cents rate increase could become a 3.4 cent increase.
So that $160 million has nothing to do with whether or not we comply with a 20% goal on the RPS?
No.
Okay, now, just a little further on that, because we've had a lot of discussion about the impact, potential impacts of fines against DWP and so on. Under the current state of the law, as of today, what requirement does DWP or any other municipal utility have with regard to generating or utilizing renewable energy sources?
The, under the current law, the municipal utilities are required to have plans of their own that they adhere to.
They're required to have plans?
Yeah.
But the requirement to generate or utilize renewable energy as of today is zero, is that right?
There is no numerical mandate placed by the law upon any municipal utility, they place them upon themselves.
Right. Now, AB 32 deals with carbon emissions, not renewable energy, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the governor's recent executive order and some other things that have happened suggests that the California Air Resources Board may impose some requirements beyond simply the flat reduction of carbon rates and include some mandate of renewable energy, is that correct? Is that what people are assuming now?
That's what we heard today, yes, that's what I heard here.
But the fines that DWP is currently potentially facing have to do with whether or not to reduce, they've reduced carbon to 1990 levels pursuant to AB 32, which was passed in the year 2006?
The potential penalties which have been discussed have to do with that, yes.
Okay. Now, if there were a shift in the power supply, in the fuel supply from coal to natural gas, that would produce a significant reduction in carbon emissions, would it not?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Looking forward, have you made projections as to whether or not coal or natural gas will be a more, or which will be the more expensive fuel source over the course of the next decade?
That depends, I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
It's likely over the next decade, if you look at the current futures prices for natural gas, right? And obviously, no one can tell you what prices will be at any future given point in time. But based on futures prices, coal's going to be significantly cheaper.
And you expect that to continue over the next decade or so?
Certainly for the next five to seven years.
Okay, we'll come back to that when DWP's back, so mark that one down. Now, as far as the cost of renewable energy as a means of reducing the carbon footprint, would you not agree that the cost of renewable energy, a renewable energy portfolio will vary dramatically depending upon what fuel components are making up that renewable energy portfolio?
Yeah, if you're talking about, are you using biomass, wind, solar? Each of those have different costs, and so.
Wind is much cheaper than solar thermal, which is cheaper than photovoltaic. Geothermal is a different price and so forth.
Yes, so the price varies greatly depending on the type and the technology.
Right, and the advantage or utility of each one of those fuel sources depends upon how well it matches the demand that a particular utility has at a particular hour, I assume then as well, right?
So if done correctly, if you really match the resource to your load shape and the demographics of your utility, yes.
Okay, so is it possible to evaluate the cost of renewable energy or the risks of noncompliance with AB 32 mandates unless you know what the resource plan is of a utility for how to comply with those things?
You're absolutely right.
No, the question is, is it possible?
No, not effectively, no.
Okay.
It's a guess.
Did you make any comparison of costs to the utility of meeting its carbon obligations through means other than renewable energy? For example, reduction in load, transfer from coal to natural gas, purchase of renewable energy credits, those sorts of things.
So we suggested that many of the things that you just mentioned all be examined in detail in the Integrated Resource Plan that the department is developing.
Okay. So what, this is, I guess this is a matter of judgment, but how do you account for the fact that Fitch's rating maintained the current bond rating? And as far as I've read in this, doesn't exactly state red alarm kind of warnings about, you know, the sky falling if the council doesn't pass this increase in the ECAF. It says nothing of the kind in this, how do you account for that?
I'll give you my opinion, and it's my opinion. So I believe the department is about to issue a significant amount of bonds sometime in the May timeframe. When they do that, Fitch and every other rating agency is coming back. So I think Fitch said, we can assume or not assume that the city council adopts this. The near-term cash impacts on the department between now and May, we think are manageable. This is my reading of theirs. We're back in May when they float their bond issues, and we'll have a chance to relook at all of this very critically. I suspect they did something similar to that, because they know they're coming back in two months, less than two months.
Well, maybe, but I guess for the sake of the record, let me just then point out that the report also says, LEDWP appears to have the debt capacity to absorb the additional $2.5 billion in debt expected over the next five years. Liquidity levels are healthy. While Fitch acknowledges LEDWP is facing long-term cost pressure related to its large capital plan and associated environmental mandates, the utility does appear to be well-positioned to meet its initial 20% renewable goal in 2010. The rating reflects the fundamental credit characteristics of the utility, including a competitive power supply portfolio, broad mature service territory, competitive retail rates, and a well-diversified customer basis, and a healthy, albeit slightly tightening, financial position. It doesn't say that, you know, there's a crisis before us in DWP because we have a limited ECAF. Now, I guess one last question on this. Did you, in your analysis, consider the potential creditworthiness impact of whether or not DWP completes its transfer commitment to the city's general fund?
So in all of the plans that we looked at, the department made, in their financial plans, they made those payments. So we assumed that they would. If they did not get the, if you keep them at .1 cent and they spend at the current levels, I can't see how they would make the transfer payments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. I think, I believe that concludes our portion of the PA presentation. I know one of you has to go, and if you wouldn't mind, the two of you could stay for a bit. We'll call DWP back at the table, and then I'm going to go through the cards. We have over 30 cards, I think we're close to 40. So I'll give each person one minute each to comment. So, Mr. Cardenas, we'll pick up where you left off.
Thank you, thank you. No questions to you from me, just the DWP board? Excuse me, the DWP representatives, can you please come to the table? Thank you, Madam Chair. Lorraine, you had described to us a little earlier, I think it was questions to Councilmember Allercon, was asking about the carbon reduction standards and the AB 32 requirements. So my question to you is, based on the actions that the board, the DWP board took on March 18th, if those actions were to move forward, are we therefore no longer going to be concerned about the potential of $600 million to $1 billion plus fines that could occur toward DWP?
That's, it will still be a concern. The action that the board took, the quarterly action to increase the cap by .8 allows us to maintain the 20% going forward. What we have as far as potential costs in 2012 are for the total carbon. And what I will say is, to the extent that we can continue to shift towards carbon-neutral resources or renewable energy, we will continue to mitigate the amount that's going to hit in 2012, '13, '14, and forward.
Okay, and Jeff or Ramon, can you explain to me, when you referred to the $745 million on page eight of your PowerPoint, what exactly does that, are you referring to when you mentioned that $745 million? It says, reduce capital expenditures by $745 million.
So that's over the plan, the capital plan that was adopted by our board last June. We reduced from that, on the power-funded portion, over a five-year period, $745 million of reduction. And the biggest piece, as I mentioned, of that is the Pine Canyon Wind Project.
Now, what did you do relative to the Pine Canyon Wind Project that added to? Now, what did you do relative to the Pine Canyon Wind Project that added to or contributed to this $745 million number?
I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. I want to say it was five...
But what action took place?
We took it out, and that, that project has now been removed.
The project has been removed, meaning that the project had commenced, it was just on paper only, where was it?
It was on paper only, I'm trying to remember when it started. I think it started in, Aram may remember.
It was about a year ago that we had that project, you know, being negotiated, and we were getting ready to execute the contract, so we kind of backed off from those projects that were on the books for us to execute.
Isn't there a wind project that was approved, and the department went ahead and started to work on that project about five, six years ago, perhaps, or maybe four or five years ago? A wind project?
Our own, our department operated, yes, Pine Tree is in service right now.
Pine Tree is in service right now, and what were the projections of that Pine Tree project when it was approved at the board level, and the council had deliberated on it, and we all agreed that we should go forward with it?
You mean the total cost?
Yeah.
The initial costs were, there was a developer that was initially going to develop it, about $200 million, and right now, the total cost is about $450 at the end of the project, when we took over the project and finished it.
Okay, so when it was deliberated, and the board gave it the thumbs up and said, "This is good, we need to add more clean energy into our portfolio," and they agreed that the project should take place, so it was estimated that the project cost would be around roughly $200 million?
That's from the developer.
Yeah, but when the project finally got finished, we ended up finishing the project in-house, the Department of Water and Power finished it?
No, it was the station, the interconnections was done by the department through our transmission line, and all the, the rest of the balance of the plant, the transmission, the internal transmission, and the actual construction was all competitively bid out for contracts.
Okay, so how would you describe the $200 million projection and the result of a $450 million project? Would you say it came under budget, on budget, or over budget?
I think based on our projections, you know, we always had the projections around $400 million, so it was very close to our initial projections based on our estimate of what the scope of that project was, but initially, when the contractors were, were putting the numbers out there, and we thought it was too low because of the terrain and some of the technical difficulties of putting the internal transmission line.
Now, separate and apart from the actual cost of the project, the infrastructure of the project, to get it up and running, what are the numbers looking like when it comes to the amount of energy that it's producing compared to when it was proposed, what the energy production was supposed to look like?
So right now, we're just coming out of the commissioning phase, and we're in the testing phase, and we have, the contractor still is on board, trying to clean up the punch list. We're looking at, at the projections, so I wouldn't take the first window of what the energy projections are right now because of a lot of outages that we're taking, but we're, we're projecting the capacity factor to be on target or maybe exceeding our targets when we want to start developing.
Really? Now, is that the average in the industry, that we keep our ear to the ground too? I mean, when people are bringing clean energy projects online, that clean energy projects are actually meeting or exceeding the original projections?
For...
Just the industry in general, just clean energy industry in general?
There's variations, like, you know, our PPAs in, say, in Utah, they put a projection out there, and based on the season, you know, we're seeing some dips in the projection, you know, generation, so, you know, it's, it is, it is something that we watch, you know, based on the energy, and that's why we have the adjustments that we're going on the market, you know, to make up for that differences.
Now, based on everything that you just explained, can, Jeff, can you tell me once again, you had a project, it was projected amount, the overall amount, now that it's pretty much done, they're going through the punch list, it's pretty much done, it's in moving condition, $450 million. Again, how did, how did that project actions or inactions contribute to the $745 million reduction in capital expenditure?
No, it's two separate projects. He's talking about Pine Tree. What we're talking about is Pine Canyon.
Pine Canyon.
Which is, I think Aram can describe, a much more difficult project, and that's part of why it was higher cost.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, Pine Tree and Pine Canyon, but they're both wind, one's a potential wind project, one is an actual wind project.
Correct, and they're kind of in the same geographic area. So Pine Tree's in service, the 120 megawatts were passed to commissioning. The Pine Canyon project is a, is a neighboring, you know, area that, that we were putting in our plans to develop as an expansion to Pine Tree, because we, we have done the major expansions to our transmission line, the station, the roads leading up to that area, and that was the plan to kind of add to that local area there.
Mm-hmm. Now, and I'll close with this, Madam Chair, just in the interest of time. Yes, I know, thank you. I just want to remind you that, when I asked you, Ramon, earlier, when perhaps you got the first signals that perhaps the city council wasn't going to be okay with the potential actions that were going to take place on March 18th by the board, I was talking to the CLA, and the CLA certainly spoke to somebody high up in the echelon over in the mayor's office that I'm sure was communicating directly with DWP, that perhaps what the board should be considering is the .8 cent increase effective April 1st, 2010, that they should seriously consider taking that as a separate voted-upon board action than the rest of the, be it further resolved, actions that took place relative to what is now being referred to as the lockbox, et cetera. And had that occurred, personally, I would not have participated in a 245 of the first action, had they been separated, of the .8 cent increase to affect the rates on April 1st, 2010. The reason why I'm having a problem with the board actions overall is because I don't believe that there has been enough transparency on the rest of the items that the board took action on, and that's why we're having these issues of us unfortunately interfering with the timeline of the Department of Water and Power on how and when they would like to take care of business. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to call up the cards, and I'm going to try to call them four and five at a time, so in the interest of time. And again, Madam Clerk, if you would run the clock for me, please, one minute each per speaker, so we can have everyone who's still in here, and I really appreciate your patience. I want to call up Frank Gallo, Carol Schatz, Estella Lopez, and Jack Humpherville. Is Frank Gallo still, still here?
Apparently, Mr. Keretz wanted to add to people's...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Keretz. Okay, sorry. Department of Water and Power people, can you come back to the table? Mr. Keretz has a few questions on, just hang on, it'll just be a few more minutes, and then we'll get, get the people speaking.
I think most of my questions are somewhat cynical, and Councilmember Cardenas touched on it, but I would have to say, it appears that the timing of this, even though there was an awareness of this for, for many months, it appears to have been timed so that it would come to council just in time for us to only have the ability really to approve it, and to probably foul things up if we chose to disapprove it. Is there any reason why we would believe anything other than that? That, can, do you have anything to convince us that the timing was other than the exact time that would make it too short a time for the DWP commission to respond to a veto by us?
I cannot give a different answer than what I gave earlier, Councilmembers. So I think, as I said earlier, we got the report on Friday, the 26th, Monday, we started reviewing it, and it took us about a week to make sure that the PA recommendations were what they were, and then we put our report together, and then we asked the board to convene a meeting, and as was said, we don't control when the board, you know, we requested the meeting, and I think there was a lack of quorum, two members of the board were traveling out of state the week that we wanted it, so then it happened on the 25th, that's for that reason.
Any reason why this couldn't have, couldn't have been done a month or two ago?
We didn't have the PA report till the 26th of February, and we were asked to wait to do anything until we got the PA report, so...
Did you, did you have a plan for what would happen if the council didn't approve it?
I'm sorry.
What's your backup plan if we don't approve this amount?
If we don't approve this amount, the only thing you go back to is what we already had, which is a .1 cent.
And presumably, the cost to DWP with the rating agencies viewing this at about $90 million?
Approximately $90 million, yes.
Now, what, if we, if we suggested, and the board got together on an emergency basis and approved, just sending back a .8 or a .5, enough to get through the quarter with a respectable amount that the rating agencies would approve, and three months to put together a fully-vetted green plan that we all could get behind and develop a consensus around, what would the problem be with that approach? And in fact, since we suggested that to the DWP commission, some of us did, we discussed it in committee before that meeting, I actually sent a letter suggesting that very plan, which the commission ignored. What would, what would stop it from trying to do that in advance of April 1st, and allowing for a consensus rather than trying to jam it down the throats of the city council?
I cannot prejudge the action by the board, what they would do or what they couldn't do, but I think there are other issues that come into play, if, when you mentioned that. I think that we have MOU with the neighborhood councils, and we need some time to do that, so I don't know. Joe, can you say?
Before you get deeper into that, I'll let you, let you answer that question, and I want to ask Mr. Keretz if he would indulge me as chair and let us go through the cards, ask the Department of Water and Power to stay, and our PA consultants, and then he can continue to pursue his questions. Mr. Krikorian has graciously indicated that he is willing to wait to go through the cards, and I appreciate that indulgence, and I believe Mr. Cardenas. So, Ms. Keretz, let's answer this last question.
Madam Chair, I'm so close to being done, I could ask one more very short question, and I'd be all done.
Okay, great, let's, let's get that going.
The last question in this direction, David Freeman was quoted in the LA Times on March 23rd as saying, "If we approve this, the DWP would come up with an extra $20 million by cutting travel and other expenditures." Is there any reason why DWP couldn't just cut travel and other expenditures anyway? And either use that to reduce the rate increase, or forward that extra money to the city to help keep us afloat?
I think we are, the $20 million that you referred to, we have already undertaken those cuts, so we are working on that right now, regardless of what, we are working on that right now.
So there's a, one would assume there was a decent chance the city would wind up with that $20 million as suggested? Or is that, again, not trying to seem too cynical, it appears to be a carrot to get us to approve something that we otherwise would be uncomfortable to approve?
I wouldn't characterize it as such, so no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Mr. Gallo, Carol Schatz, that's Frank Gallo, Carol Schatz, is Frank Gallo still here?
No.
Okay, Frank Gallo's gone, Carol Schatz, Estella Lopez, Jack Humpherville, Mr. Humpherville, are you still here?
Back.
All right, come on up, and then Larry Roush, are you still here? Okay, great, okay. Okay, Ms. Schatz.
This is too much, too fast, with no notice, and now we are completely confused. When the department first came in, it was a 16% rate hike, then it went to a 21% rate hike, then today, it went to, I'm not sure, is it 37% or 42% over four years? So we are, I mean, let me just give you an example, if it was a 37% rate hike over four years, it would be $2.6 million in 2014 for a large commercial property in downtown from its current cost. That would be the amount of the increase. It's insane, can't be done, can't be borne by the landlord, it can't be borne by the tenant, I don't care what kind of lease it is. You are absolutely assuring job losses with no real certainty that we're going to create jobs in the future. Can't be done, thank you.
Estella Lopez.
I represent the Central City East Association. The last good industrial jobs left in downtown Los Angeles are clustered where we are. They talk about people who use more will pay more. Well, the people, in my example, the people who use more are the people who employ more. What we're talking about here, the currency we're talking about here is human capital. My people have already cut to the bone, they know how to save money, they know how to cut costs, they've implemented all of the energy-saving methods that they can. The only thing left, they can't pass it along to their customers, they have to pass it along in terms of human capital. We will lose the good industrial jobs that this mayor, that this administration has vowed to keep. This is not keeping that promise. Frank Gallo had to leave, he's one of my members. The net increase to him alone, one cold storage company, is $332,000 a year. He will be paying the DWP close to $700,000 a year.
Thank you. Jack Humpherville.
My name's Jack Humpherville, Greater Wiltshire Neighborhood Council. First of all, thank you very, very much for this very revealing and transparent hearing and report by PA Consulting. It's been fantastic. Secondly, this is, this is a walking definition of why we need an independent ratepayers advocate. The mayor threw up this air ball, unthought of, it was just unbelievable. You know, he hauls in Al Gore, you know, let's throw it against the wall and see if it sticks. He takes swipes at an environmentalist. He calls the city, he thinks the city's going into bankruptcy. It is unbelievable. That's why we need a ratepayers advocate, and I thank you guys from the bottom of my heart for being so good. Bye.
Larry Roush.
My name is Larry Roush, I'm president of Los Angeles Cold Storage, we're a 115-year-old company in downtown LA in CD 14, and I live in CD 5. I'm the people that Estella and Carol are talking about. I have a business in LA, we have 75 employees who work hard, and we have cut our, our kilowatt-hour usage, but this is the kind of rate increase that will devastate our company. We are big power users, obviously, and we can't, we live in a competitive environment. We have to compete against people all over, and we cannot compete if you tie our hands, and we cannot employ people. So, this is the worst economic time, we have unemployment at over 12%, and what you're saying is, the industrial jobs that this city finds important are not that important, we're looking to find other jobs. Well, that's what you're going to have, if you can find them, because it will not be ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Yen, Greg Yen, and then after Mr. Yen will be Nicole Shehanian. Nicole Shehanian, are you still here? Okay, great, and then Alice Druffel? Alice Druffel, are you still here? Okay, great, come on up, all right. Mr. Yen.
I represent a company, Broadcast Facilities. We run a television broadcasting facility, and we run three production stages, as you can imagine. Those businesses are very power-intensive, thus we are tier-three customers. The rate restructure that came in place on July 1st of this year resulted in a 22% increase in our power rates. If you throw on this increase that's been, being proposed, it will result in a 50% power increase for us that will have taken place literally over the place of one year. We can't, we cannot absorb that, especially with the type of revenue contracts we have in place being fixed over a long-term basis. We actually had the LADWP come out and give us an energy assessment last week, and their conclusion was, in an effort to save power, you know, you guys are doing a lot of things that are right right now, there's not a lot you can do to save power. Just want to talk about jobs, we have another facility in Georgia that we just acquired in January. The power is one of our biggest costs in our business, we're looking at putting more projects out in Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nicole Shehanian.
Good evening, Nicole Shehanian, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. This proposal could not come at a worse time for LA businesses, with the city facing the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression, asking our businesses to shoulder an over 25% increase in their utility rates is unconscionable. In Hollywood, small and large employers continue to struggle every day to survive this recession. For many, this will mean drastic cuts to their operation and potential layoffs to our workforce. The city has assured the business community time and time again that LA wants to attract and retain jobs in the city, yet initiatives such as this undermine LA... and retain jobs in the city, yet initiatives such as this undermine LA's attempt to become more business-friendly. In addition to our small businesses, the Chamber is increasingly concerned that this rate hike will lead to increased runaway production. The city's film and television studios will be among the hardest hit by this proposal. Based on increases that went into effect just last year by DWP, our studios are already experiencing 15% to 20% increases in their utilities. That's not taking into consideration what happens April 1st. This is already, runaway production is already a problem for us, this is bad for business and bad for jobs.
Thank you. Alice Druffel.
Hi, Alice Druffel, from California Interfaith Power and Light, and we actually support this .8% rate hike with the .3 cent kilowatt for the establishment of the Renewable Energy Trust Fund. I'd like to make two quick points about cost. First, we understand the concerns of the business community and ratepayers. However, the RTFF, sorry, the Renewable Energy Trust Fund allows for energy efficiency programs, and so one of the huge solutions to this is energy efficiency. Everyone has to use less energy, and a lot of this stuff will go away. The second thing is that little is said about the costs that people are already bearing in terms of healthcare costs, asthma, respiratory illnesses, lost workdays, and even premature death. That's due to dirty air we need to get off of coal. Then we will be able to lower our healthcare costs, and then one of those solutions, that would be one of the solutions.
Thank you. Chuck Ray, and after Mr. Ray will be Rusty Millar. Is Rusty Millar still here? Rusty Millar? And then Jim Stewart, is Jim Stewart here? Jim Stewart? Come on up, Jim Stewart. And then Patricia Barker, are you here? Okay, great.
Good afternoon. I believe that a prudent answer to the DWP Board of Commissioners' motion raising the ECAF is for this committee to recommend to the full council that they reject Motion 24 passed by the Board of Commissioners on March 18th. This rejection should be accompanied by an explanation notifying the Board of Commissioners that the council will approve only an increase to the ECAF which covers the accrued under collections, a reserve for unfunded obligations already made, and of course, an allowance for the city's portion of the ECAF. The letter should state also that no further rate increase motion should be passed until the DWP, the Board of Commissioners, and the Office of the Mayor completes action on the following: establishment of an independent ratepayers advocate, publication of detailed reports on the department's plans for renewable energy developments and demand-side management, unbundling and removing all currently, all elements currently in the ECAF that are not directly controlled to uncontrollable expenses for energy, and selection of a new public member for the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Again, Rusty Millar is not here, so Mr. Stewart, Jim Stewart.
I'm Jim Stewart, the Chair of the Global Warming Committee for the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club, and on behalf of the 45,000 members in LA County, we want to say that we support the Renewable Trust Fund because there is no question that global warming is a crisis that needs to be addressed at all costs, and fortunately, it's not excessive cost, that we have seen the price of renewables coming down and the price of coal and natural gas going up. And therefore, we urge you to approve the cost of this Renewable Trust Fund, we'll not get into the other aspects, and that we want you to have us take our leadership role as defending the climate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Patricia Barker, and then Jack Allen, is Jack Allen here? Okay, Mr. Allen, and then James Ralston. Is Mr. Ralston still here? Okay, great. Patricia Barker.
My name is Patricia Barker. My husband and I have worked for the City of Los Angeles for a collection of 68 years, okay? Right now, thanks to shared sacrifices, we are not getting 27% of our collective gross income. 27%, okay? The mayor now wants more. If you enact this rate hike the way the Department of Water and Power wants it, I'm going to give you the keys to my house. I will have, you will have effectively destroyed my family, and I will have had nothing to do with it, okay? Right now, there's a very real possibility that I am going to lose everything. If this rate hike goes the way they want it to go, and they want a 37% increase for residential, I'm done. So my letter to you today is, I'm taking a stand. I can't do anything more. I will not paint. Period. I don't care what you do, shut me down, I can't.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Jack Allen, Pacific Palisades. I've been fighting air pollution for 60 years, I'm a member of the Sierra Club, but I'm opposed to this. As well-intentioned as the DWP proposal is, is not only terrible timing, but completely insensitive to the hard times of many of what its customers are experiencing. My grandson's fifth-grade teacher was just laid off, as was his fourth-grade teacher. My son is taking a 10% pay cut, and he's got to take furlough days. So knowing that DWP is taking a pay cut or a furlough, and they're not getting fired, so if DWP needs the money so badly, let the overpaid DWP officials and employees take pay cuts to get the money. Don't falsely claim the money will go to create new jobs, because for every dollar that a DWP customer don't have to spend means a dollar lost to other businesses and corresponding loss of jobs.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ralston, James Ralston. Following Mr. Ralston will be Lisa Sarkin, are you still here?
No, she's not here.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm a ratepayer from Councilmember Kretz's district, and my rates have been going up. As somebody said before me, that started quite a while ago. However, I do not feel that this is some sort of plot by the DWP to gouge me. The prices of fossil fuels are going up, and they will continue to go up. The idea here that if we postpone this by not raising rates now is not going to work in the future. I think the best thing is to support the Renewable Energy Trust and begin to get us away from what's going to ultimately kill us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Missles, Chris Rowe.
Sheila.
She's gone? Okay. Val Lurch, or Lynch? It looks like it's L-E-R-C-H, Val Lurch? And then Marcus Castain? Is Marcus Castain here? Delona Acosta? All right, sir, why don't you go ahead?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, committee members. My name's Jim Missos, I'm the General Manager of the Anheuser-Busch Brewery on Roscoe and the 405 in Van Nuys. Our brewery provides full-time employment to hundreds of employees, contractors, and truck drivers, most of whom are union members and receive excellent pay and benefits. Our brewery is one of the most efficient in terms of electricity usage among our 12 U.S. breweries. In the past five years, we've deployed capital initiatives that have reduced our electrical usage in Van Nuys by over 35%. Last year, we spent over $1 million in capital on lighting efficiency projects. The increases attributed to the ECAF result in a negative impact of over $1.5 million in this year and $3 million full year 2011. The increase being proposed is in addition to a 20% increase of $2 million we received in 2009 from DWP. These drastic increases make it very difficult to do business here. The rate of a kilowatt in Los Angeles under this proposal would be more than three times what we would pay in Fort Collins, Colorado for that same kilowatt. Also, the timing of these increases with 20% in 2009 and 2.7 cents on top of that in the ECAF is devastating. It doesn't give us the opportunity to scope and plan alternative energy projects of our own or reductions to offset them.
Thank you. Now, Chris Rowe is no longer here. Chris Rowe's gone. Val Lurch is not here. Are you Marcus Castain?
Yeah.
Okay, Marcus Castain.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcus Castain, and I'm the founder and CEO of a nonprofit organization named the Infrastructure Academy. We prepare young people for the career opportunities of the green economy, and are educating and employing young people in many of your council districts. We're currently doing water conservation work, and we'd love to be doing energy efficiency work as well, but right now the DWP just doesn't have the programs, doesn't have the resources in order to do that. Frankly, it's much more attractive programs to do this, attractive territory to do this in Edison area than it is to do this in LA, but we want to employ young people in LA to do this kind of work. Today, this morning, I heard NPR story about how China's just surpassed the United States in its investment in renewable energy. And I know it's a bad time in the economy, and I feel for all the business owners and homeowners who are speaking here, but I think it's also a time where we make the difficult decisions, you make the difficult decisions that we've elected you to do, that our planet needs to stop global warming, and that we can benefit from in terms of green jobs and putting people to work in a different sector in the new energy economy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Diana Acosta, come on up. Brian Duvarde, Brian Duvarde, are you still here? And then Noel Weiss. Go ahead, say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name's Diana. I graduated from Fremont High School, I work for, I'm with Generation Power, and I'm really concerned about the climate change. I feel that the city needs to invest in energy efficiency and renewable power. I have been working for the area of water conservation, I love to, you know, take part of, and the energy efficiency and part of DWP needs the funding to do so. We are in crisis, it's a bad time, but then again, later on, it will help the future, and like Marcus said before, it will help young people take the advantage and really care for what's going to happen later on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss.
Council members, there's one involved in the Measure B opposition, I kind of feel a little bit of deja vu, because this sounds to me like the son, or the illegitimate son of Measure B. Number one, I don't understand why transfers are tied into ECAF. ECAF has nothing to do with the city transfers at all. By definition, the ECAF is supposed to take care of volatile fuel expenses, the transfer payment has nothing to do with that. Secondly, the debt service tied into ECAF likewise. I think this is a bait and switch by the mayor and by the DWP, and I don't think the council should fall for it. We have the same promise for performance, kind of bait and switch tactics that were tried on Measure B, and this council has got to stand up for logic, common sense, and consistency, and I think we need an opinion from the city attorney, the attorney for the people, as to whether or not this really represents a disguised tax increase, and why the taxpayers of this city should subsidize the inefficiency and inept management of the DWP, particularly with regard to not only how they handle this, but with regard to the management overall. Thank you.
Evan Gillespie, Evan Gillespie. And then Monique Lopez, are you still here, Monique Lopez? And Stephanie Taylor, Stephanie Taylor, come on up. And Rhonda Mills. Rhonda Mills still here? Okay, great. Evan Gillespie.
Great. Hi, Evan Gillespie, I'm Regional Rep for the Sierra Club. Appreciate the opportunity and the conversation that we've had here today. You know, I have to say, I'm a little concerned with where the conversation headed, though, in the conversation about how do we postpone our investments in renewable energy, and how do we figure out to deal with the debt and wait on renewables? Because to me, you know, the story of the PA report and what the PA report says is very clear, it's fossil fuels and it's a dirty utility that got us into debt in the first place. And if we don't get out of these fossil fuels really, really quickly, we're going to continue to go in deeper and deeper into debt. And it's not just, when we talk about AB 32, when we talk about federal climate change regulations, it's not just these laws which are going to preserve a livable planet, it's a NOx ruling, it's an ozone ruling, it's a mercury emissions ruling, it's all of these different things that are coming towards coal, and if we don't, if we jettison the single solution to this problem of getting off fossil fuels, we're only postponing this issue for another day. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Monique Lopez.
Monique Lopez, Coalition for Clean Air, thank you for this opportunity. Let it be clear that dirty fuels like coal are responsible for the huge portion of the ECAF-proposed increase, and a small portion would go towards a renewable investment fund. Due to pending state and federal regulation, coal is no longer an investment, but will become a liability to the City of Los Angeles. That is why we need to invest in renewable energy and in energy-efficient programs. Therefore, we need an integrated resource plan that supports getting out of coal by 2020, and a capital investment plan that reiterates the same. In the resolutions, it states that expenditures from the fund will be consistent with an approved renewable resource plan and energy efficiency plan. Therefore, we believe that this proposed action contains the first building blocks for an accountable and transparent process as defined above. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Taylor, and then Rhonda Mills.
Good afternoon, my name is Stephanie Taylor, and I'm representing the Green LA Coalition, and our message is simple. Investing in renewable energy is not a luxury that can wait. And I know that you are committed to the environment, and I know that you're rightly concerned about the impact on people struggling in this tight economy, but a yes-forward on ECAF and the Renewable Energy Trust Fund says that we can't afford not to invest in renewable energy today. Investing in renewable energy makes sense for three simple reasons. Ratepayers can and will save money in the long term. Two, we have the potential to create local green jobs and stimulate the green economy. And three, we must reduce our dependence on coal-fired plants for the public's health and for the health of the planet. So we urge you to approve the ECAF increase in the Renewable Energy Trust Fund today, and in doing so, you can help secure sustainable, healthy, and clean energy future for Los Angeles.
Thank you. Rhonda Mills.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Mills with the Clean Power Campaign. I want to associate my comments with people who are in support of the Renewable Energy Trust Fund. I'm a little confused about PA's report to you today. That written report says in place after place that not to minimize our exposure to coal and not to minimize the risk that we are in with coal and fossil fuels. They also make a mistake in a recommendation that we should defund renewables, defund DSM, and ramp down our natural gas use because those are more expensive compared to coal. We won't reiterate carbon fines and all the things that are the financial, the real financial risk to ratepayers, which is going to come in a few years. So basically, renewables and DSM are actually the insurance against that risky future. Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Perry, Mr. Krikorian, your time in the legislature, you guys have given us every vote we've ever needed, we've ever asked for, because you want this city to run right. You are right to be nervous right now, I know this is a hard time, please just give me one minute, Madam Perry.
You have one minute.
One more minute, thank you. I'm just, I was really confused by PA's testimony, so I had to spend some time addressing it. It feels like they're kind of talking out of both sides of their mouth, and it also feels like they're asking you to make an investment that keeps you vested in a risky future. Now, if you don't fund a Renewable Trust Fund and an efficiency fund that's tied to very clear constraining accountability...
You're going to have to wrap up.
You said one minute, Jim.
No, no, I'm not giving you two minutes, you used your minute.
You said one minute.
No, you used your minute.
I'm just saying, just don't defund renewables and efficiency because we're in an economic crisis. This is your moment to get the accountability and oversight back that you need, and you can tie your actions to that.
Thank you. All right, Marilyn Bush. Glenn Berryhill, is Glenn Berryhill still here? Come on up, Glenn. And Marita Papu, Marita Papu, are you still here? Okay. Marilyn Bush.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Bush. I'm speaking for myself, I've lived in Los Angeles my whole 80 years of life, I have lived through many years of great smog, and we've done a great job in cleaning up the city. What's happening now is that the DWP is so arrogant, they are crushing us as homeowners and the ability to live here and enjoy Los Angeles. My water bill has gone up and up, even though we have striven to reduce the amount of water dramatically that we're using, and then we're told, oh, well, their revenues went down so much, so we had to increase the rate. The same thing's going on with power. I know most of you realize there's no cola for those on Social Security because costs didn't go up, but costs have gone up. They've gone up every time you go to the market, every time you go to the gas station, and my costs are really cruel in terms of the whole tier business by the and my costs are really cruel in terms of the whole tier business by the Department of Water and Power.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you can't be on Tier One, you're going to have to move out of this city. I want to thank you each personally for being so well-informed. Your questions were fantastic. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berryhill.
Good evening. Glenn Berryhill with Thomas Properties Group, Western Region, Vice President of Property Management, representing approximately 3 million square feet of office space in the city of Los Angeles, housing nearly 100 businesses and employing over 5,000. In today's economy, all ratepayers and businesses are seeking to remain viable, just as the DWP is with this rate proposal. However, residents and businesses have not been able to spend as planned, and we suggest that DWP needs to adjust its spending plan in light of the economy. The proposed rate increase of up to 28 percent in year one and increasing to 37 percent in year four will have a direct economic impact on businesses and job creation in the city of Los Angeles. We assert, again, that future jobs to be created in sustainability are not more important than current jobs that need to be preserved and supported now. We urge the council and DWP to find a balance in the proposed rate increase in light of the current economic environment and determine if the rate increase can be scaled back or deferred over time to allow economic growth to occur prior to implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marita Papu, Marita Papu. Stephen Hirsch, Stephen Hirsch present. Lynn Myers, Lynn Myers, are you still here, Lynn Myers? Tom Anderson, is Tom Anderson here? Come on up, Tom Anderson. And Michael McHugh, Michael McHugh? Okay, great. Ms. Myers, you go first.
Hello, Lynn Myers, and I'm from the Fashion District Business Improvement District. We represent 980 property owners, 4,000 businesses, and about 60,000 jobs. We thank DWP, or we thank the council for asserting 245 in order to have this meeting today to review the proposed increase. DWP has been a good partner. The Fashion District understands the need to balance the budget, and at the same time, businesses will benefit if increase is phased over a longer period of time. However, if rates are raised 37 percent over the next three years, the overall effect on the Fashion District businesses and jobs will be devastating. The increase comes on top of increases over previous years. Many owners have already implemented energy conservation measures and are not seeing rate reductions. Instead, they can now expect more increases without an opportunity to participate in the process. We believe businesses and owners deserve a seat at the table to talk about reasonable ways to implement the necessary move toward renewable energy resources. Thank you.
Tom Anderson?
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Anderson. I'm the Deputy Executive Director with Community Career Centers in Los Angeles. We are the operating agency of the Los Angeles Wilshire Metro Works Store Center. We proudly support the Renewable Energy Trust Fund and its goal of generating up to 18,000 local living wage jobs, increasing local economic development, and of course, improving our local environment. The Workforce Investment Board and the local Works Store Center stand ready to recruit, train, and prepare 18,000 potential new employees to work in the renewable energy field. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McHugh?
Michael McHugh, Studio City Neighborhood Council. I also wanted to thank the chair and the committee members today because your questions were really great, and I think we got some answers or revealing truths regarding the lack of answers. This, I want to reiterate what Jack said. This is why we need an independent ratepayer advocate, not one that's appointed by the mayor, not one that is appointed by the DWP, a ratepayer advocate that is appointed and confirmed by the neighborhood councils of this city who have been really yelling for this, and I know my neighborhood council has passed a statement saying, a motion to say this. We don't like it when the DWP uses the tactic of fear as a political tactic. That is reprehensible. To rush things to the last minute, again, this is a repeat of Measure B. We ignored that, and for the environmental people here who understand the needs that it's called for, I support that, but it has to be done properly. Don't let yourselves be bullied, council.
Thank you. Dr. Woody Clark II, I think he's gone. Shamari Davis, are you still here, Shamari Davis? After Mr. Davis will be Don Jones. Is Don Jones here? Come on up, Mr. Jones. And then Patricia Rubin, are you here? Patricia Rubin. Okay. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, council. My name is Shamari Davis. I'm from Local 11, IBEW, Los Angeles. I also represent about 2,300 DWP ratepayers, and we are here to support the ECAF because we understand the importance of solar generation. In this economic climate, in this economic climate, double-digit unemployment, the passing of this by the city council would initiate much-needed job creation. Energy efficiency and energy retrofits can help businesses reduce their costs, we know about that. Establishing Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency Trust Fund now is absolutely essential because we will be able to invest in projects to reduce our carbon emissions and create good green jobs. So doing this now minimizes the city's contribution to the inevitable state-mandated carbon fines. Thank you very much.
Don Jones? Don Jones, Don Jones, are you still here? Let's see. All right, Don Jones is not here. Patricia Rubin, are you here? Patricia Rubin? Jose Aguilar, Jose Aguilar? And Trevor Ware? Is Trevor Ware here? Okay, Mr. Aguilar. And then Jaime Garcia, are you here? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jose Aguilar. I'm a member of the DWP MOU Committee, and one of the main issues that I have with this is that the mayor wants this tax, carbon tax, so he could fund a trust fund, and he's not giving us an implementation plan for this trust fund. He's not giving us an itemized implementation plan, where this money's going to go, how it's going to be used, and I will not give him a blank check. And I'm telling you, without an implementation plan, as a member of the Sierra Club Central Group, I will recommend my colleagues to first look, review, and see the itemized and how this plan's going to be used before they just give him a blank check and trust the mayor to use it properly. I don't trust the mayor. The other issue is this, before you give businesses a bitter pill, you have to explain to them how the money's going to be used. Right here, Eastern Republication has just stated that this carbon tax would devastate the economic well-being of the Northeast and East, and I want to submit this to the administrative record.
Okay, thanks. You can give that to the Sergeant-at-Arms, and he'll put it in the official file. Mr. Garcia?
Oh, this too. My name is Jaime Garcia with the Hospital Association of Southern California. Today, where half of the hospitals are operating in the red, and simply asking them to adjust to a 20 percent-plus increase is problematic. This county is very familiar with the economic health of hospitals, especially when you reflect back on the fact that over the last seven years, 11 hospitals have closed down in this county. Just to kind of put it in perspective, the average bed capacity in the U.S. is 3.4 beds per thousand. In California, it's two beds per thousand, and in some parts of LA County, the ratio is less than one bed per thousand. Hospitals are a unique consumer of water and energy use. Though many are attempting to implement energy conservation initiatives, Title 22 ultimately mandates how a hospital will operate 24/7 in terms of infection control and how it maintains its physical plant. For example, state regulations require hospitals maintain an internal temperature and maintain a specific humidity level within their facilities and their rooms. We can also cannot ignore the fact that medical equipment also consumes significant amounts of energy. So at this point, I'd just like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Thank you very much, sir. Last speaker is Didi Aldette. Is Didi still here?
The hour is late. My name's Didi Aldette. I want to tell you that I was terribly disappointed to hear criticism of the council of the city of Los Angeles for taking up this issue. I think that was uncalled for. I think I'm a pretty good environmentalist. I've been heating the water for my household since 1976 from the sun, and I've been driving a hybrid car for five years. Works well, too. The thing is, rates and revenue might be looked at like this. As rates go up, revenues will go up until those rates reach a certain point, and people then decide to do it another way. And then you're left high and dry. There is a tipping point, a place at which you raise the rates, and people will make other plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aldette. That closes the public hearing, public comment portion of our meeting today. Were there members, any other members who needed to pose additional questions to either the department or to PA Consulting because they're still present here? All right, Mr. Kukorian?
I'm doing what I can to continue. I can wait until Tuesday. I'll have a chance to ask then.
All right. Why don't I make the recommendations, and I invite my colleagues to add to that. What I'm going to recommend today and then to ask you if you're able to support me is to instruct the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer to jointly and immediately report to the committee with recommendations to address the pending ECAF matter as it relates to the board's proposal and PA Consulting proposal. In their recommendations, both the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer should address the following issues. Maintaining the financial stability of the state and the Department of Water, I'm sorry, the city and the Department of Water and Power, and I would also include in their the minimum standard. Seek transparency of the ECAF through its potential decoupling of its three main components. The renewal, sorry, I'm tired. The RPS, Renewable Portfolio Standard, energy efficiency, and a market-driven ECAF. Seek to develop an ECAF proposal that reduces residential and commercial ratepayer impacts below the projected 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour threshold. And then finally, give us the pathway to provide the long-term solutions through a collaborative IRP process for energy efficiency and the Renewable Portfolio Standard. And I'll just run through each member if they want to add anything to those recommendations. Mr. Corretts, did you want to add anything to those recommendations?
I second it.
Thank you.
I'd suggest that we also ask what amount it would take in a rate increase, at least in the very short term of a quarter, to maintain our good ratings at the DWP. And also, I would ask that we strongly encourage DWP to set a meeting for next Tuesday or Wednesday after our meeting to be able to respond to the council's action.
Just so you know, Mr. Corretts, I'm going to ask for continuance tomorrow in council to allow the CAO and the CLA time to have the report prepared, and we're going to work on everybody's schedule to move this expeditiously, and my objective is to get it done, get it into council by Tuesday.
But more importantly than just that, that we encourage the DWP to anticipate that and schedule a meeting for Tuesday or Wednesday so that we don't pass the April 1st deadline that we've heard about without some sort of a final action.
Mr. Alarcon seconds your motion. All right, thank you. Mr. Alarcon? Anything else? Mr. Cardenas? And Mr. Kukorian?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
You're okay? All right, so those are the recommendations made on behalf of the committee, and Mr. CLA, don't, where's the CLA?
Right here.
Right here, thank you. It's hard to see over the top. Do we need to take a vote on that, or is it enough to make the recommendations on the record?
If you'd like to take a vote, you certainly can.
Okay, verbal. All right, so those are the recommendations made by the chair. Let's take a, do we want to do that without objection, or do you want to vote on it? Verbal?
Without objection, that's fine. Good.
Okay, fine. We will do that without objection? Yeah, without objection, and that will be ready for this coming Tuesday. We will have a committee meeting before we go back into council. Okay? Without objection?
Thank you.
All right, the, thank you, everyone, for your enormous amount of patience, but this is an important issue, and I appreciate your staying here and giving us your comments. And thank you to both the staff of the Department of Water and Power and PA Consulting, appreciate it very much, and the meeting is adjourned. Oh, before I adjourn, hold on a second. Well, I'm not sure what I do with it, but, oh, yes, I've been asked to adjourn in memory of a former Los Angeles Police Department officer who was deployed in Afghanistan. His name was Robert J. Cottle, who was on deployment with the United States Marines in Afghanistan, and he exemplified what it meant to be an LAPD officer. He earned the respect of his fellow officers with leadership and conviction through a career of public service that spanned two decades. He will remain eternally a part of the department, and his unwavering dedication to public service will undoubtedly live on as an example to future generations of other officers. This man's name was Los Angeles Police Officer Robert J. Cottle. Thank you very much. Thank you for remembering him, and this meeting is adjourned.